City Commission for November 20th, 2025. Madam Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we have an invocation today. We did receive word that our pastor had a conflict come up at the last moment and is unable to be with us.
Okay.
Would you like to do a moment of?
Yeah, I'm going to ask everyone to just pause and do a moment of silence here. All right, thank you all. Always good to take a moment to be centered.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are on to the adoption of the agenda. We have a few updates on the screen.
Mr. Reese.
Yeah, I move adoption of the agenda with the recommended updates.
Motion in a second. I see no further lights. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We have Commissioners Chestnut and Duncan Walker absent. Madam Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we have early public comment, but we do not have anyone signed up. So we will move on to our business discussion items for the morning. 2025-884 Years of Service Recognition for Community Builders. With recommendation, the City Commission recognized those employees with 15 years of service or more for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2025.
Okay, we start off, as always, on the more brief end of things, but still, at 15 years of service. Our first 15 years of service award goes to Alicia Smith Hall. Okay. All right. We'll make sure she gets that. Oh! All right.
Here we go.
Very good.
All right, door.
Congratulations.
Thank you!
Come around here, let's get a photo.
Oh, okay.
All right, next up, also over 15 years of service, which it seems like it can't be that long, but Lonny Scott Jr. All right, very good. And moving up to 20 years of service, y'all, 20 years is a long time to work anywhere, and particularly for a city government. And I really, really appreciate all the folks who were on the list for 15 and 20 and more years. This particular one goes to Byron Lewis. All right. So 20 is a lot. 30 years is a lot to commit to the people of Gainesville, and I really, really appreciate everyone on this list. And with us today, Michael West. All right, there's a, as you can see, there's a long list of folks, but I really, really appreciate everyone showing up for work, whether it's your first week on the job or whether you've been doing this for a long time. And I want all of you to know that the people of Gainesville appreciate the work that you do. So, thank you. Mr. Manager, do you want to weigh in on that?
None on that item, Mr. Mayor.
Right, but you do have a special item.
I do, I do. I would like to use this opportunity to announce that we're very excited to be having our third annual holiday parade on December 6th. And communication staff has a very nice video for you all to review, and I'm very excited to keep this tradition alive, so.
All right.
Bring the family to downtown Gainesville on Saturday, December 6th, for a very GNV Holiday Parade. Beginning at noon, enjoy floats, dancers, marching bands, and much more. This year's grand marshals are acclaimed theatrical director Marion J. Caffey and award-winning saxophonist Emmanuel Garilis. We're also celebrating the Star Center Theater's 25th anniversary. And be sure to stick around after the parade for a variety of family-friendly activities the whole community can enjoy. Don't miss the City of Gainesville's A Very GNV Holiday Parade. The perfect way to start your holidays.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to share that we have a couple other things going on for this holiday season, as you probably have observed. We have the festive on first, which is a CRA-funded decorations that are up and down first, and including the hippodrome. That's complete, that'll be up through the holiday season. We also currently have, we're about to launch a downtown holiday lights contest for our commercial businesses that'll be decorating downtown. That'll be starting with some voting, starting in December 6th, and running through January. And then I'm very excited to announce that as part of the commission's direction to provide some activation of the streetery before construction starts, we'll be launching a holiday market on the streetery. That holiday market will start on December 12th. There'll be 31 vendors, and that will last over the course of time till mid-January. Those will be local vendors selling holiday market stuff, they'll be actually building little booths, and so that'll be all their pre-construction, but it'll be a way to, again, bring people downtown, share the holiday spirit, and then support local businesses. So, I'm very excited.
Very cool, I love that. That was the first I heard about that.
Yeah, there you go.
Excellent. All right, so mark your calendars, everybody. We've got the parade and the lighting of, official lighting of all the lights at the Thomas Center, they're already lit if you go by there, but with the official lighting that evening, it's always a fun day. So make sure, if you're watching at home, make sure you put that on your calendar, we'll look forward to seeing you there. All right, Madam Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to 2025-912 Gainesville Fire Rescue Quarterly Update, with a recommendation the City Commission here, a presentation from Gainesville Fire Rescue.
Welcome, Chief Hillhouse.
Thank you, Commissioners, charters, Sean Hillhouse, Fire Chief for the City of Gainesville. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to highlight the good work that the men and women of Gainesville Fire Rescue do. The lens that we'll be looking at everything through today is actually based off of our mission statement, which is to protect and serve through community involvement, education, prevention, and rapid intervention by professionals committed to excellence. We will start with our prevention mission, and the metrics that we use are total square feet inspected, investigation hours, total plans review hours, and total risk reduction activities. And for quarter four, you can see we inspected almost 10 million square feet of space. We had 73 investigative hours, 68 plans review hours, for a total of 1,303 risk reduction activities. And since this is quarter four, we can actually compare this for the year and kind of look and see what our trends are. So if you compare FY '24 and FY '25, you can see that our square footage of inspected space is up considerably by about 10 million square feet. One of the big reasons is because our buildings are getting bigger around town. We're replacing everything with larger buildings around town, so the square footage is increasing quite a bit. I'd like to point out that we managed to have that increase, even though we spent a lot of time on the risk reduction audit and kind of changing the way that we go about conducting inspections. Our plans review hours stayed relatively the same, and our investigative hours, you can see, decreased. One of the reasons behind that for this year was because we actually had our two investigators, both retired and resigned, so we started from the beginning with our investigations program. We've been working with the State's Attorney's Office and GPD to make sure that our investigation program was good, and they've made up a lot of time. Our fires have actually continued to increase, and you can see the investigative hours are going to kind of return to that previous level and probably exceed that in the future. And then our total risk reduction bureau activities increased by about 1,000 activities per year. So we're up on almost every metric, even though our staffing level has remained the same. For our rapid intervention, the metrics that we use are call volume, turnout time, and travel time. And the metric that, for call volume, what we're using that for is to determine whether we need to adjust our dispatch protocols, that being, do we need to send different unit types to that call, or do we need to send more or less unit types to a specific call? Do we need to add peak units based off of trending, where we know that we're going to have increased call loads, or do we need to add off-the-shelf units? So we may add peak units if we're trying to solve an EMS call load problem, but if we're trying to look at overall risk, that's where we would add a 24-hour fire unit. And that's one of the reasons that we look at call volume. For turnout time, we call this an honor challenge, because it's the only metric that the firefighters actually have complete control out of. You know, we don't decide how many calls or when the calls come in, we can't control the traffic, but when the bell goes off, we have complete control on how long it takes us to get to the truck. So that's one of the things that we look at. And then our travel time. Travel time, we use to make decisions on whether or not we need to add stations, or whether or not we need to do what we call system status placement, which is where we know that we're going to have an increased call volume, and we specifically place a unit there. A great example of that is during the football games, where we put multiple units inside the closed street area. So that would be an example of system status. So that's how we use these metrics. This is our breakdown, so in quarter four, we had 7,325 requests for service. This gives us the breakdown based off of geography and everything to the south of the red line is District 1, everything to the north is District 2, just so you can kind of look at your districts and see what's going on. And out of that 7,325, we had 4,000 in District 1 and roughly 3,000 in District 2. We still see that EMS is the predominant call factor that we're going to, but we have seen increases in fire, and you can see that, you know, if we can compare this, you'll see a little bit of an increase there. And then our third is rescues and special hazards with 92 calls for this quarter. Our turnout time for quarter four, just as a reminder, the national best practice is 60 seconds for turnout time, 60 seconds for EMS calls, and 90 seconds for fire calls. And GFR's average is actually 45 seconds for all call types, so we take this one seriously. When someone asks for help, we like to move quickly. For quarter four, our travel time, the national standard is actually four minutes, five minutes total, including the turnout time that we talked about earlier, plus four minutes of drive time. So our department average is five minutes and eight seconds. And if we compare these two, you'll see that our turnout time decreased a little bit, and that we met that turnout time 91% of the time. For our travel time, we are at five minutes and three seconds, so about a minute over the national best practice, and we met our travel time 88% of the time. For our total responses for FY '25 of 28,841 requests for service. Just a quick update on the stations, so we are currently in the process of replacing Station 3 and Station 9. Thank you for the commission's support on that. Station 9, we're just waiting on the final closing for HCA. We've already started the design process, and we're about at the 100% design mark for that station. And then Station 3, we are at the 90% design mark. And expectation is that we'll be able to break ground on both stations by May of '26.
So I'd like to pause you for just a moment. Is there any reason to believe that we won't be closing with the HCA, that things going well, Mr. Manager?
That's correct, yeah. We're on track, it's just taking a while, because, you know, unavoidable back and forth, so.
Gotcha.
But yeah, we're on track.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
And then just a quick staffing update, so we currently have five operational vacancies, and then we have two employees that are off on military leave for a total of seven operational vacancies. We just completed a hiring process for driver operators, we'll be promoting seven driver operators, and we're in the process of conducting a certified hiring process, and we'll be bringing those firefighters on in February.
And that's, so seven, five actual vacancies to military service, what is the total number of firefighters? Or what is that, those seven people, what does that represent on a percentage basis?
So in operations, we have 186 operational personnel.
All right.
So we're a little bit different than some of the other departments in that we have a minimum staffing, so versus having vacancy savings because we have people off, we incur overtime for having somebody off.
Right, right, but boy, is out of more than 180, we have seven.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty great.
Moving to community involvement. For emergency management, we had activations, for our COC activations, we had activations for training for hurricane season, and activations for our triennial ARF drill, if anybody got to see that or participate in it. We do that every three years, it's a full-scale exercise. And for quarter four, we did six incident action plans that were created for large events and 21 coordinated special events. For FY '25 year in review, we had one activation.
Just a moment, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When does hurricane season end?
At the end of the month.
Okay, good.
So we did have one activation for Milton, which actually occurred last year, and then we have not had a hurricane activation this year. We had a joint activation for the basketball Final Four, and we've created 21 incident action plans throughout FY '25 and coordinated 110 special events that were multi-agency or multi-entity between city, county, the UF. All right, and I will now turn it over to Director Stone.
Welcome, Director Stone.
Good morning, Brandy Stone, Director of Community Health Initiatives. Great to be in front of the commission and charter officers today. I'll start off by sharing with some of the happenings from the Community Health Division, with the first update being about our opioid abatement settlement funding. As the commission is aware, we are receiving funding for 18 years total, we have about 15 years left in that, through the National Opioid Abatement Settlement Funding, and we are putting that money to great use to serve the residents of Gainesville. That looks like a couple of different things. The first and newest is transportation, so we have had a lot of concern from folks getting to and from mental health and substance use-related appointments, and so we have partnered with a local nonprofit who is doing Uber Health rides to get folks to those appointments, and that service is offered to patients of the Community Resource Paramedicine Program as well as the GPD co-responder teams. So it is a multi-department partnership to get folks into those services that they definitely need, and we're grateful for that partnership. We're also continuing the work on the development of our public education campaign around substance use and the available resources in our community, I hope for a spring launch, so you may see some great messaging coming out about that. We are going to do some messaging with, message testing with our neighbors to make sure that the messages resonate and connect with them, and after that, we'll move into the development of the campaign itself. We also continue to contract with a nonprofit to provide service to justice-impacted individuals who also struggle with substance use disorder, and that looks like workshops in the jail, peer support groups, and harm reduction education. We also are fortunate to have gotten funding through the county to do some additional work around substance use, and that is going to provide us with a program coordinator to oversee some of these efforts and to be a little bit more public-facing with some of these educational opportunities. Next, I'll move to our Community Development Block Grant Funding, that is a partnership with our Housing and Community Development Department here at the city. We continue to offer trainings to our community around topics like mental health and crisis intervention, and we are also funding our public education position with our Community Development Block Grant Funding, and that will conclude in December of 2026. Moving to Fresh Fades and Healthy Hearts, which is our new grant-funded initiative to train barbers to take blood pressure of clients in their chairs. We have had a wonderful launch of this in our community. You may have seen, it's been picked up by quite a few news stations, and they've done some wonderful stories on it. But to this point, we've trained nine barbers to take blood pressure, and that's come from our EMTs and paramedics at Gainesville Fire Rescue. We've launched in three barber shops, and those are Coconut Salon and Barber Shop on 13th Street, Four Streams of Beauty on Northwest 6th Street, and Faith and Freedom Barber's Studio on West Newberry Road. And we have two to three more barber shops that we'll be launching before the end of the program. We've seen a really great uptake from their clients in this, and we're excited to continue to grow it. At the next update, I'll have a six-month in-review data to share with you on the success of that program so far, but we are capturing information from clients on their blood pressure, and if they're interested in getting connected to other resources, and if so, then we refer them to our Community Paramedicine Program, where that program will follow up and get them connected to any other health resources they might be interested in. And that is funded through the Coverus Community Healthcare Foundation, it's a private grant. Moving to the events that we participated in this quarter, it was a very busy quarter, as fall usually is. Chief Hillhouse and I were approached by the Journal of Emergency Medical Services to do a webinar on our Community Resource Paramedicine Program and how it's propelled the city into the public health sector, so we did that over the summer. I had the pleasure of speaking to a Boy Scout PAC, that was my first time, about substance use education, and had a great time with them. We also had a large event at Depot Park for International Overdose Awareness Day, where we had many community partners join us. Many folks came to recognize loved ones that they had lost to substance use, and also share their own personal stories. I participated in the Chambers Town and Gown Visit when Athens came to visit us and shared about our community health efforts, and then also had the pleasure of hosting the Brazilian delegation at GFR for a brief presentation as well. And moving to the Community Resource Paramedicine Program, so this quarter, the program had 136 new referrals, with 672 patient contacts or attempts, 295 hours of direct patient care, and participated in 34 community events and 12 professional development and trainings. Some highlights from the work they did with the patients in that quarter, 11 patients were connected with substance use services, 20 patients gained food assistance, 19 patients applied for transportation assistance, 21 patients were connected to a primary care doctor, 52 connections were made to a health specialist, 38 connections made to a behavioral health resource, and 15 had an increase in home safety. So the team is busy making sure that folks get connected to the appropriate healthcare services, and we've also, as you can see in the photos, been engaged with a number of community outreach events, that includes our Healthy Afternoons with Fire Rescue, participation in our department's food drive at Pine Ridge. Our team has also been certified as bike helmet fitters, so they can appropriately fit youth and adults for helmets to increase our mobility safety. We also have our staff all serving on access-to-care subgroups of the Department of Health, so they are advising other paramedicine programs in our state on best practices, and they're a major part of that conversation. Lastly, we continue to coordinate with Grace Marketplace for the funded beds. The Community Paramedicine Program is kind of the coordinating entity between Grace Marketplace. For that, we've placed 29 new individuals in those city beds this quarter, and worked to provide services to 25 different encampment referrals through the MyGNV platform. We had a new responder, one, join us in October to oversee the community health pillar, and we had two of our staff attend EMS World 2025, which is an international EMS conference. A wonderful highlight from that is our very own Ketchia Robillard, who's a responder with the CRP program, sorry, was named EMT of the Year nationally, and so we're extremely proud of her. It's very well deserved, she's done amazing things, and has been with the department for about five years, so to recognize her on a national stage was wonderful. You all know I cry, I apologize.
It's all right, we appreciate the passion.
It's a good reason, right? Okay, moving to our Medication Assisted Treatment Program, so this has been moved under core funding, which is initiative of the state. We participate in partnership with Alachua County, HCA Healthcare Meridian Shands. We had 55% enrollment in the program in this quarter with 11 new patients. We administered 59 doses of Suboxone to those patients, and had 18 patients return to our program for what's called a gap service. We administered 80 doses to those returning patients and participated in 18.75 hours of community engagement. We attended a reentry conference, multiple substance use 5Ks, and our International Overdose Awareness Day. This quarter, we are also fortunate to have contracted with a certified peer recovery specialist to join our MAT program, so that is someone with lived experience with substance use, who goes out on patient visits with our team to talk with folks and share other options, and just provide that level of peer support. We are now fully staffed with three part-time EMTs for the program, and our staff also presented at the Alachua County Crisis Center's virtual symposium this year about our program. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Coleman to share about Impact GNV and our gun violence updates.
So before you walk away, I want to remind everybody that our Community Resource Paramedicine Program and all the things that you just listed, those are not things that happen in every city. I mean, these are things that are special to the City of Gainesville, that Gainesville Fire Rescue, and particularly you, have built out over the years. It is changing and saving lives in our community in very specific ways. We're not doing public health anyway that says, "Come to us, and we'll find a way to get you treated." You all, everybody at GFR and across the system, you're going out and finding ways to keep people in our community safe and healthy, and that is not something we should take for granted. So just want to remind everybody of that. Commissioner Book.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The things you just said were exactly kind of what I was thinking, was we're kind of on the forefront and the cutting edge of what you're doing, Director, and the incoming Director here on the next page, same thing. I don't think we go to any community event where either Impact GNV, the paramedicine, Gainesville Fire Rescue is not represented in some way, it's not really just education and awareness, it's the prevention piece. The prevention piece is the piece that actually makes a difference for us, that we can see in some of the metrics that the chief was talking about. And then I look at this, Fresh Fades and Healthy Hearts, and I'm thinking, talk about innovation, incredible. That's one that I think the Florida League of Cities will probably want to hear about next year, and some other areas. I know if I go and get my blood pressure taken at a hair-cutting place, it's probably going to be up, because I'm worried my hair's not coming back.
That is not a problem, I don't worry about it.
They take it at the end, Commissioner, so you had time to relax before.
So I'm not going to one of those barbers, I can tell you that, but unbelievable, health and going with the folks who are right there out in the middle of the community, these folks who cut hairs, I just, it's pretty amazing stuff, so, thanks for that. And the next slide, it's going to be the same thing, but I just won't repeat myself, so thanks for that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Book.
Welcome.
All right, good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Brittany Coleman, Gun Violence Intervention Program Manager with GFR and Impact GNV, and I'm happy to talk about the things that we're doing in Impact GNV, starting with our community engagement. One of the really exciting One of the really exciting projects that we have underway is a partnership with Dr. Micah Johnson from UCLA, who's contracted with the city to provide performance art around gun violence prevention, mental health awareness. And he agreed to do a special showing of his play onsite with the SciTech Micro School. So we were able to bring not all of the school, but a lot of the students to the Hippodrome Theater to see a preview of his play onsite, which premiered in October, and I'll talk about more in our next quarterly update. But it was a special opportunity because many of the students at SciTech mentioned that it was their first time in the Hippodrome and their first time seeing a play on the main stage. And so that was a really wonderful opportunity for that entire school. We partnered with the Lynx Bookstore. They have a yearly community engagement called Gainesville Reads where they pick a book and it's kind of like a citywide book club. So we were able to participate in that and provide a lecture to the patrons there. You can see a picture on the bottom about our work with gun violence prevention from a public health perspective. We also participated in Porter's Quarters Day of Celebration. If you remember, in our last quarterly update, we talked about our GPD forfeiture Funds, which we were able to utilize this year courtesy of GPD. And in our last quarterly update, I mentioned peak literacy out in Phoenix and the gains that those young people who participated in that program had in their reading scores and their reading comprehension. In this quarter, I wanted to highlight the residents at Oakview. We did a little bit differently with them where we provided a technology hub, which was laptops, smart board, robotics kits, a STEM kit, and something else technology related, I'm blanking. But a technology hub where they were able to grow their after-school program where they weren't really able to serve a lot of kids. And it enabled them to serve over 30 of the young people daily at that program. And that program ended up being a catalyst for more services out of that specific apartment complex. And I wanted to highlight, we were able to do some surveys with the young people. I don't know if I can get the overhead, but I just wanted to highlight really quickly some of the impacts that we learned from this program. We were able to do an entry and exit survey with the young people. And these are just some of the five, I think, really important impacts that came out of that program. We partnered with them about this time last year, and they were able to launch at the beginning of the year. So this information covers about January, February to where we are now. And one of the really significant changes was a decrease in the fighting behavior of the young people that participated. It dropped nearly 90%. So self-reported physical fights at the beginning of the program, about 63% of the young people admitted that they had been in a fight or a physical altercation. And at the end of the program, only 6%, which was the strongest behavioral improvement. Two, pro-gun attitudes decreased to nearly zero. Three, emotional well-being improved significantly. So youth reported higher levels of cheerfulness, calmness, positive energy. And all of those changes were statistically significant, showing a very clear improvement in their emotional health. They also strengthened communication and coping skills. So increased, excuse me, increased statements like, "I talked to my family about my concerns. I know why I feel sad. I handle my stress positively," which indicates, of course, increased emotional regulation and support-seeking behaviors, which are protective factors for risky or negative behaviors. And then number five, engagement and interest in daily life increased. So one of the strongest improvements was agreement in the statement that my daily life has been filled with things that interest me. So being able to provide them a safe, stable opportunity every day after school, increased their motivation, curiosity, and engagement, which again, we know are protective factors. And not just the survey, but we actually asked them, like, "What are some of the things that you learned through this program? And what was your favorite part?" And so through their feedback, we also saw that what they said strongly correlated with what they indicated in the survey. So these are just some direct quotes from some of the young people. "I learned that I could help other prodigies," which is what they call themselves. "When I'm having trouble, I learned about SNAP." And there's an asterisk by that because many of the students mentioned SNAP, which is Stop Now and Plan, and it's all about making better choices, taking a second to pause, think through whatever the situation is and make a different decision. And many of them indicated that that was something new that they learned. Of course, robotics was a huge part of the technology hub and being honest. I learned to be respectful to others and my mom. I learned about what to do when I get mad or upset. I learned that I could ask for help. I learned that I could talk instead of yelling or being loud. And then one of their favorite, well, we asked them what their favorite things were, and I just added four comments here. But most of the students mentioned one of these four things. So of course, being able to actually get on the laptops, having access to really cool programs like robotics. And one of them said, "Robots." Yeah, I mean, the robots. That's what they really liked about it. But solar power, building a solar race car. And what was really surprising to me, I loved working on math and reading. And we did see an increase in their ability to do math and to improve their literacy through this program. But we didn't want to just ask the kids and take their word for it. We also asked the parents, "Did you see any changes in your young people and your children?" And these are just some of the examples. The program really helped her with great, making great decisions, again, going back to that SNAP plan. Their grades improved in math and other subjects. They improved their listening at home and responsibility. And several parents mentioned that their child is more vocal, more confident, and they tended to open up, which correlated with the increased coping skills and support-seeking behaviors that the children themselves indicated. And really cool, last month, one of the students who helped create the idea for the prodigy club was named October Citizen of the Month at his school. And below is just a little snippet of what the school said about him. And then we actually wanted to see if safety in the neighborhood actually did increase. And so one of the things that we did was look at the calls for service for just that apartment complex. Because not only were these hubs used for the young people, but again, it created opportunities for other agencies and other support services to come in and support that apartment complex. And so we saw from January to August, just an overall decline in calls for service to that specific apartment complex by about 32% and a 75% reduction in gun violence-related calls, which again correlates back to what the children themselves self-reported. And again, it's not just the laptops that are responsible for this, but it's about the programming and the opportunities that they had as a correlation to the laptops. And I just wanted to highlight that really quickly because it was a great program. And we are going to, and I'm done with the overhead, thank you, look at how we can help them grow that program. And so they are part of our technology hub, new program through the Children's Trust. So we are going to provide them with additional laptops so that they can serve even more of the children that live in that complex as well as the adults. Because again, one of the things that we see is the intergenerational programming is really important to folks. And so we wanted them to be able to build their capacity in that area as well. So that's one of the things that we're looking forward to with that program.
So let me pause you for a minute. What, what's the age range of the prodigy club?
So most of them are eight to about 12. But there are a couple of high schoolers, and then there are a couple of really small, small ones. But most of them are elementary, about eight to 12 years old.
And about how many total?
About 36.
That's awesome. I mean, those are phenomenal results. We should be duplicating that and telling that story.
And the hope is that we can grow, that was a kind of pilot project for us, if you will, to see if just making a small investment in one way could help bring additional resources to a community. And with our funding from the Children's Trust, we are going to purchase seven technology hubs, excuse me, which we'll be able to place throughout Alachua County. So right now, we're in the process of partnering with organizations that can place those carts in different places as well as what their programming can look like. And we're hoping to launch that January, February of next year.
That is kind of the definition of a successful pilot, I would say.
Yeah. And a huge thank you to the residents at Oakview, to their community manager, Jared Folds. A lot of this is because of his dedication and the kids themselves who came up with the idea for this. And so one of the tenets of Impact GNV is to mobilize existing things already happening. And this was just a great example of just making a small investment in people who are already dedicated to the work and seeing how that can grow. And like I said, they've been able to bring in additional support outside of Impact GNV that have also helped for the results that we've seen as well.
Really terrific. Thank you for that.
And so with our BOLD program, this quarter focus is really heavy on the months of going back to school. So one of the things that they really wanted to focus heavy on was their presence in some of our area schools. So they've worked really hard to build relationships with, continued relationships with Agwin Jones and Westwood Middle School. And between those two schools, they're able to serve now about 35 to 40 students weekly and go in and check in with those students, maybe spend some time with them, mentor them, kind of see how they're doing, and continuing to grow those services. And that's something that they're really excited about, being able to support students directly in the schools. But in addition to that, they were able to add 20 new clients for this quarter. Four of those clients were successfully enrolled in college. Three of those clients were successfully gained employment. And they were able to facilitate six housing connections with some of those clients as well. They served five justice-involved clients. And one of those clients was actually able to get employment with a local restaurant and is now looking to enroll in Santa Fe and some of their vocational training so that they continue to grow and achieve the goals that they have for themselves. So our BOLD program is continuing to, to work and be extremely active in the community. Right now, I think that one of the things that they are dealing with, as you all know, is just the increase of families who are just dealing with their basic needs and some housing insecurities. And so they've interacted with quite a few families that are experiencing houselessness and just trying to figure out where to go. And some of them are actually coming from other states and other areas and just landed in Gainesville. And so that's been another thing that they've been trying to navigate and doing a really great job. With our Team Nexus Violence Interrupters, so a snapshot, again, this quarter covered going back to school. So a lot of their community engagement was centered around providing backpacks and school supplies and resources to children directly in the neighborhoods. So we were able to partner with GFR and Pine Ridge Community Center at their back-to-school event, Harbor Cove, which is in the SWAG area, and also the residents at Oakview to hand out backpacks. And you could see a picture of them there, literally just setting up a table and engaging the kids who were just walking by. "Hey, do you have what you need for school? Hey, let's go meet your parents and see if we can support you in any way." And being able to give out backpacks. As far as their numbers, 40 referrals, 99 parental contacts, 163 field contacts, 35 home visits, 13 conflicts mediated, and 72 different neighborhood canvases. And these are the areas, main areas of focus. Again, the SWAG area, Duval, Sweetwater Square, and Tiger Bay, which is on the east side. And then finally, our Community First efforts. Just as a reminder, there are seven neighborhoods in Community First. You can see them on the right side of the slide. And the department heads who oversee the Community First initiatives. Across all seven of those neighborhoods, there were 36 hours of community engagement for the quarter between 17 meetings, eight which were attended, and nine which were hosted by members of one of these seven departments. And then as far as neighborhood inquiries, there were 22 total, 13. When we put this together, we're in progress, nine completed. And we kind of hover around just under 14 days to turn around an inquiry from in progress to completed. And this is just an example of what some of those different community engagement efforts look like. And I wanted to take a second to plug Ms. Lashundra Hale and our Communications Department for developing a really great newsletter. They've done a fantastic job translating some of the data from these seven neighborhoods into a very engaging newsletter. So I did bring copies. They're out in the lobby. But I highly encourage folks to take a look because it goes into more detail about what's happening in all of the seven neighborhoods and just across the city in general, as well as where to go if you need anything in the city, different departments and what their contact information is. And then Impact GNV components, we continue to be very active in the Gun Violence Prevention Alliance. This quarter was very heavy in our implementation, or excuse me, our planning of our Gun Violence Strategic Plan, our county-wide Gun Violence Strategic Plan. So we were able to contract with DPI LLC, which is a Florida-based, a small, family-owned, Florida-based company with very deep ties to Alachua County, and I believe the Archer area. But they have been in the community for the last several months, talking to stakeholders, leaders across the city and the county, as well as residents, just to get a full sense of what our direction forward should be. And that final plan will be released in December, on December 8th, at our next alliance meeting. I've also mentioned the technology hubs again this quarter. We were really heavy in planning and launching for that, and we are on schedule hopefully to launch in January. And then Community Safety Day, again, we continue to host these trainings to equip community members with needed tools that they need to intervene and the chance that they encounter a situation that calls for de-escalation or stop the bleed or having to administer Narcan. In August 18, we're trained. And again, because of that partnership with the Lynx and Gainesville Reads, we were able to host a training with them, and eight additional members of the community were trained in community safety. And that's it for me. Thank you.
That is phenomenal. I mean, all of that together is, again, special. This is not something that happens everywhere, and it's not something that happens by accident. It happens because you all very intentionally do this work. We brought on the right people. You all are doing the work. And it is really terrific, and we see the results in the community. So thank you for that.
And I will close this out with our public education efforts for the last quarter of the year. That is our Fire and Life Safety Educator. She's funded through Community Development Block Grant Funding. And she did a number of activities, as you can imagine, with back-to-school. It is a big lift. We did our annual back-to-school campaign. So if you drove by any of the school zones the week before school, you likely saw a lot of our firefighters, our staff, and some community partners out with reminders for people to put their phones down, buckle up, and be mindful of school zones. And that's an annual campaign that we do. She is also our marketing individual for our department. So she attends a lot of the trainings that our crews do to capture them. We also had the 9/11 stair climb in remembrance of that day. You'll see some of those photos here. But she hosted 12 company visits, so folks coming to fire stations or our crews going out, nine station tours, two fire extinguisher trainings, for a total of 23 events, and 913 community members reached through that. We're grateful for her and her continued work. We'll have some holiday events and information coming out from the department as well. And with that, I'll turn it back to Chief for any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Willis.
A couple of questions first. I think it's easy. Chief Hillhouse, I think it's pretty dry recently weather-wise. Is there a burn ban currently in the county?
Yes. So the county issued a burn ban at the beginning of this week.
It applies to Gainesville as well?
Also applies to the city of Gainesville. We generally have a burn ban with certain exemptions for commercial burn pits. But during the county's burn ban, we extend that to the entire city of Gainesville.
All right. Just want to make sure people know that. Second question, I think is actually a question, it's topical, but for city manager and city attorney. There's a recent lawsuit in Tallahassee about their fire fee, which is different than our fire assessment. But if you could, if someone could give us just a brief how that lawsuit is different, our fire assessment is different than their fire fee and how perhaps ours will not be challenged by this lawsuit or if something was decided in it.
Mr. Mayor, I can you be the kind of layperson? So essentially, if you all remember, Ocala got into some legal trouble with their fire fee. Tallahassee's fee is almost identically structured. And so I think that is part of why I think we have been careful both about the approach that we've taken, which is not a fee. which is a, which is not a fee, it is a special assessment, which is allowed, um, under state law, um, as a form of, uh, avalorum taxation. Um, and then also in terms of some of the, uh, there was some, I think, criticism of some of their methodology where they were exempting, um, uh, certain churches or religious, um, institutions, um, inconsistently. As you all know, we don't provide an exemption. We in, in, in turn, um, pay for those things, um, for, um, to make sure that our, our, uh, assessment is completely legal and, um, um, and it is strong in terms of, uh, being able to withstand a challenge. Um, so, so it, it is different. We have an assessment, they have a fee, um, and that's fundamentally the difference between, um, between the two. And then, I don't know if Dan has anything to, to add to that.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I, I really just reinforce what, what the manager has, has said, and there is a, a difference between the special assessment and a user fee in this regard. And, and I wouldn't opine that, that one is lawful and the other isn't. I think they're, they can both be lawful, but what I know about the lawsuit in Tallahassee is just what I've read in the media, and they seem to be attacking the fee, uh, on a number of grounds that aren't relevant to our special assessment. Primarily, I think, their, their complaint is that the, the fee has no bearing to, uh, what's being protected by the fire department. And inherently, that's what a special assessment does. I think if you look at Chapter eleven of your ordinances, you'll see that, um, I mean, in s, the statement of legislative determination in Section eleven-four, it's hereby ascertained and declared that the fire services, facilities, and programs provide a special benefit to property because fire services present a logical relationship to the use and enjoyment of property by, and it gives reasons. There is a direct relation to the charge that we assess to the, the, the services being provided to that protected land, to the protected property. And to, we, we exempt out from our fire special assessment, for example, EMS services and services to people that isn't to, to the land. Uh, that's why I think, uh, when it does come up on an annual basis, uh, we are always very protective of our methodology. We have what we view as a tried and true methodology that is lawful, it is fair, and it is understandable, and we're always, it's a significant revenue source for a very significant public service that the city provides. So we're always very protective of, of, uh, of any suggested modifications to it. I think sometimes to your frustration, maybe, but, but that's, that's the reason why, or lawsuits such as this. And, uh, so we have a confidence in our special assessment without passing any sort of judgment on the validity of a lawsuit against Tallahassee or any other municipality.
Okay. Great. That's why I was just gonna, we may hear, in the afternoon, someone may bring it up in the, for the public, who knows? Um, but it's in the news. And then for Chief Hillhoss, a, a more specific question to GFR, and I know it's a, it's a bit of a preview of our budgetment later in the evening, but since you're here, I wanted to ask. In FY twenty-five, there was one point two million dollars of personnel overages in GFR, and so if, and because you're here now, instead of calling you back in the evening when we do it, can you tell us a little bit about what types of personnel overages, the overtime versus just kind of everything else? Cause it's, it's a significant amount, and so if we could hear a little from you as opposed to, you know, just finance, staff, and labor this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, so that o, overage ends up in our overtime budget, and I, I alluded to this a little bit earlier, that we have a minimum staffing. So, and that, that minimum staffing is, is number one, based off of, uh, state statute, which says for us to enter into IDLH environments, immediately dangerous to life and health. We have to meet a two-in, two-out rule. So we have to have, uh, if we send two people inside, we have to have two people outside. And, and then we, we look at FPA recommendations and ISO and accreditation requirements that say how fast we have to be able to assemble an effective firefighting force. So those are the, the, the three things that really set our minimum staffing so that we could be able to accomplish all of that. Our staffing factor is currently set at a one, and, and by, by that, what I mean is for each seat on the apparatus on every shift, we have exactly one person that is budgeted. In the past, uh, we've had a staffing factor of one point three. But, uh, over the past probably about ten years, it's been difficult for us to maintain that staffing factor, and, you know, so, so that we can maintain what we could, uh, we've made some organizational changes, uh, which brought us down to a one. So we are currently at a staffing factor of one, meaning that for every shift, for each seat on the apparatus, uh, we have exactly one person to do that. So when we're fully staffed, that would get us to a balanced budget. To meet the minimum staffing requirement, when we are not fully staffed, then we incur overtime for that position, and we're a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five operation. So that's, that's why I kind of gave the caveat that we're only down seven people, but whenever you're down those seven people across twenty-four hours, uh, it does, it does add up. And, um, we've gotten two of seven, so we've been slowly moving down. We go back about five years, uh, we were at, uh, roughly twenty-three people. So we've made some organizational changes, uh, you know, to, to be able to attract more people, and we've slowly been, uh, you know, changing our, our losses so we're not losing quite as many people, and moving our staffing factor back up to one.
Okay, so is it, so just, in our Finance Committee meeting, there was some discussion from city staff that this one point two doesn't represent kind of like all on the overtime side, but other, other portions of personnel. And so I just want by this evening, the commission to get clarity on that, because I kind of am hearing two different things. They can kind of both be true, um, but I just, that's why I wanted to ask you while you're here.
Sure. You, I mean, we can have savings in one area, uh, and overages in the, in the other, but what it, what it comes down to, the driving factor is maintaining the minimum staffing. That's, that's what the overall driving factor of the, of the increased cost is.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Hillhoss. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Uh, any other questions? All right. Um, again, couldn't be more pleased with the work you all are doing. Uh, very, very happy of, of everything within, uh, GFR and the way that, uh, supports everything else we do as a city. So thank you very much for, for being a terrific chief and, uh, and, and all the folks who work at GFR for, uh, providing terrific service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to twenty twenty-five eight eight six, Resolution for Forty-nine U.S. Code, Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-three-ten, Grant Applications. With the recommendation, the City Commission adopt a resolution required in support of the Red Regional Transit System Application for a Florida Department of Transportation, forty-nine U.S. Code, Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-three-ten, Grant for Operating Assistance for Paratransit Service and for Capital Assistance to Purchase a Replacement Ban. And authorize the city manager designate to execute related public transportation grant agreements with the Florida Department of Transportation, subject to approval as to form of legality by the city attorney.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager, did you want to put this out there for us?
Sure. The, um, both this and the, uh, the next item are, um, typical, um, grants that you all see every year, the fifty-three-ten and the fifty-three-eleven grants, um, go to support, um, uh, primarily, uh, capital assistance, um, with, uh, with RTS. And, uh, both Jesus Gomez and Francis Donahue are here to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Book.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So, and really, this particular grant is really along the lines of some of our paratransit service. I mean, that's the focus for this particular one, with a very, very small match, you know, really one-tenth, if I, if I'm understanding that correctly. Is that, is that right?
Yes. That's correct. Yes, a ten percent local match.
Okay. Um, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of twenty twenty-five eight-eight-six and the recommendations as listed in our agenda.
Second. We have a motion in seconds. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
There is no, no public comment.
Okay. I see no for the whites, all in favor.
Um, it's a roll call.
If it's a roll call, you're right. Okay, let's call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Engle.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Um, Commissioner Book.
Aye.
Commissioner Willis.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Eastman.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye. That passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. Madam Clerk.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we're on to twenty twenty-five eight-eight-seven, Resolution for Forty-nine U.S. Code, Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-three-eleven, Grant Applications. With the recommendation, the City Commission adopt a resolution required in support of the Regional Transit System Application for a Florida Department of Transportation, forty-nine U.S. Code, Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-three-eleven, Grant for Assistance with Costs for Demand Response for Rural Area Transportation Service. Authorize the inclusion, uh, any resulting grant award in the next available city budget amendment, and authorize the city manager designate to execute related transportation, public transportation grant agreements with the Florida Department of Transportation, subject to approval as to form of legality by the city attorney.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, similarly, uh, Mr. Manager, anything to add to that, or?
Um, no, this one is a little bit different in that it has, um, a rural component, um, to it, but, uh, but again, it's, uh, because we're, uh, we are the, uh, sort of granting agency in this case with RTS being designated, this grant comes to us, and then it goes to, um, support rural transportation services.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, does there any public comment on this?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Commissioner Willis.
Change of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight-eight-seven.
Second. We have a motion in seconds. Uh, Madam Clerk, I don't see any other light, so let's call the roll.
Commissioner Eastman.
Aye.
Commissioner Engle.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Commissioner Book.
Aye.
Commissioner Willis.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye. That passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. Madam Clerk.
That concludes the morning agenda.
All right. That was, uh, smooth, and a lot of great information. We have, uh, and, and I will hope for the same thing in the afternoon. All right. We'll see you back here at one o'clock. Welcome back to the afternoon session of the Gainesville City Commission Meeting for November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we are on to our Gainesville History Moment, um, to be presented by Manier Vivian Filer.
Welcome. Wonderful to have you with us, as always.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. I'm delighted always to come and face you, uh, to share with you a little African-American history as it relates to Gainesville, Florida. The things that I have been able to cover over time have been the things that I personally have gone through, at least some portion of them. So I think that, uh, there are certainly other people who have a lot more to share, but since I'm the person that's here today, I want to talk about the fact that back in the day, and back in the day for me, was around the fort, as I was born in thirty-eight, African-Americans were not recognized in newspapers. In fact, you would never know we were in the world, as far as newspapers were concerned. I am sure that, that, that condition has changed some, but it's not where it used to be, needs to be. So back in those days, the newspapers recorded who had a new child, who got married, who got promoted, what organization was doing what, and all of those things were white. Uh, in the newspaper, there was a section about a quarter of a page in size that was called the Colored News. And Mr. Charles, who lived on, uh, Northwest Eighth Street now, would, uh, structure whatever he could, get into that little section, and that was all that was reported on African-American history. And I bring that up because often at the Cotton Club Museum, when we're trying to research something, everybody will say, well, did you read the newspaper? I said, let me explain to you what the newspaper did. Even BB King and Ray Charles and all of those who came to the Cotton Club Museum were not able to save the, the, you know, the advertising deals and things they had, and they were docu, they were not documented, be, and so they were not in the newspaper and all of that. That's significant history to me. So what I would like to he, to say and to be a part of is the telling and the sharing of African-American history as it exists in Gainesville, Florida, because that's all we're responsible for. At the Cotton Club Museum, it is our job, it is our charge through the Florida African-American Heritage Preservation Network, which we're a partner to, to tell Florida history. I'm proud to be in Florida most days, but, uh, sometimes it's not easy to be in any other southern states, and I don't know, I won't go any further than that. I'll let you figure that one out. But when I looked and, um, Googled it to find out about the first African-American reporter, you know how far they were off? They listed Bill Maxwell. Well, all of us remember Bill Maxwell. That was in the nineties, and, uh, for an African-American reporter. So now the, the internet quotes the fact that there's like twenty-seven percent of their, um, staff is African-American, and that doesn't tell us anything about Gainesville. We know now Gainesville suffers for the lack of a newspaper anyway. So having that absence of being in the news and in the history, I thought today, I would like to highlight a lady who I have so much respect for, and her name was Ms. Cora Peterson Roberson. Ms. Roberson lived, when she grew up, the Peterson family lived right off of Waldo, right off of Waldo Road, before Duval Heights and all of that was built, and there were a row of houses there. Her family was huge. So one of the notable things about African-Americans in Gainesville, as far as we're concerned, and the families that were remembered and talked about, were the families that, that we knew of because of their position, of course, their business, because of whatever, but also because of the size of their families. So there were some very, very large and great families, and the Peterson families, family was among that, and the other, the other one I mentioned would be the Fox family, and there were several others. Uh, but I bring that up only to say that we know that, we being African-Americans, older African-Americans, I'm not sure the young people know very much about it, so it's important. So let me talk a little bit about Ms. Cora Roberson. I'm very proud that her sorority, uh, uh, and the neighborhood on Sugar Hill has a part in her name. She deserves that and much more. Ms. Cora Roberson, in her own words, that I took from the San Ypres Oral History Program, uh, says, "My grandmother used to say, 'Just hoe your robe out to the end.'" "Just hoe your robe out to the end." Now, for those of you who are city people, you don't know about the hoe and digging around the plants. She's saying to her, "Don't stop in the middle. Whatever you do, complete it, just, no matter how long it took, just hoe your robe out to the end." And that's what she did. So Ms. Roberson was not born in Gainesville because her grandmother was a midwife, and she lived in Egerton, Florida, so her mother went to Egerton to deliver her baby so that her mother could be her midwife. But she did live in Gainesville, and she served in the African-American community, first as a teacher and a very prominent outspoken person, because she belonged to the NAACP, where she was very active, and another organization that she and I both shared, is the Gainesville Women for Equal Rights. We were the first integrated group of women in Gainesville, and I don't know if I should say this for history's sake or not, but the commissioners didn't like to see us coming to their meetings, and we had a little person inside their meetings who used to tell us stuff that they didn't know about. So we got a report one time that one of the commissioners said, "Please, tell me those damn women won't be here again tonight." But, you know, I just thought I'd share that. I don't think you're doing that now, but we were there because issues were being discussed. We had committees that went different places, so the political committee could, would tell us when a statue or something that was coming up that we needed input into, and Ms. Roberson was a part of that. So I'm very proud to have known her, very outspoken, very calm, very ladylike. One of the other stories about Ms. Roberson is what she was the first African-American woman to be, uh, placed in a white school when they integrated the school. She was there at Kirby Smith. And she talked about going to Chestnut's on the corner down there where we bought, they bought school supplies, and paying for the supplies out of her pocket. And while she was there, a white teacher asked her, "Why are you paying that out of your pocket?" She said, "Well, I have to have it. What else?" She said, "The school has an account that they let us buy our supplies out of." That was not an unusual situation. That was par for the course. I had a very, very influential person in my life, Mabel Dorsey. She taught home ec, uh, and a lot of teaching in other areas too, in, in terms of our lifestyle, but she used her personal money to buy the things that we needed to do to move ahead. So in doing that, they taught us family, they taught us community, they taught us sticking together, and they taught us there would be no situation that you cannot overcome. So we were doing these, these things in the name of progress. But Ms. Roberson also was a part of a neat group of women, uh, that, I'll name a few more names, and I have to talk about Ms. Frederica Jones, Ma, Aquan Jones' wife, Ms. Frederica Jones, who was my teacher. I don't know, I know she taught a lot of people, but she was my teacher. I give her credit now because she taught me, uh, she taught Shakespeare one day and African-American folklore another day. We grew to love Paul Nurse, John Barley, St. Hughes, Count de Cullen, and we did that. And then my little friend who was at Viewhost, and she was in high school, used to come and get me to go to her school, Commissioner Duncan, and do things. She's been active all her little life, but the reason was to carry on. She's been active all her little life, but the reason was to carry on and to teach. There's a lot to be taught in those works. So I have done them all over Florida on TV. My biggest audience was at, um, Disney World. We had, all my sisters and I had an audience of 650 people, just because we want to get the word out. But Ms. Roberson also, um, referred to Seminare Lane, uh, which is now Fifth Avenue, and there were businesses there, Reverend Kato Sundry. We were not allowed to go on Fifth Avenue a lot, but on Saturday, when we got our quarter, we could go buy a hot dog and a cherry coat, and nobody made them like Reverend Kato. And so that was our outing for the day. Across the street from that was Sarah's Place, where Sarah had the first group of musicians who would come to jam in her back door, and those who couldn't get inside would listen on the outside. University of Florida students came as well. So when Ms. Sarah went over to open the Cotton Club Museum, Cotton Club at that time, and bring in bands that were visiting, those students from the University of Florida heard about it, and they wanted to hear James Brown and B.B. King, so they came over too. Guess what? Ms. Sarah had to close, because the great, you're gonna forgive me for this one too, the great white fathers who sat on the dais as the commissioners did not renew her license, her liquor license, so she had to go then to a juke joint, and she put in a jukebox and named it the Blue Note Club. I diverse, but I want you to see the era that we're talking about. In 1990, in 1968, Ms. Roberson ran for the City Commission and only lost by a small margin. She is quoted as saying, "I wanted to get something done for my people," even though she did not win. She stated she was very pleased that she had, she had the opportunity to call some attention to some of the problems we had in the black community. She went on further to say, "Just so many doors were closed to us, and they needed to open and to receive us and give us equal opportunity as human beings," and I thank you.
Thank you so much. I would tell you, Ms. Roberson was, uh, responsible for one of my absolute favorite moments in public life, that I'll tell everybody about it, but that's a point, but yeah. Thank you. She was. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we are on to early public comment, but we currently have no one signed up, but now we have a general public comment, um, with Mr. Richard Selwak.
Welcome, Mr. Selwak.
I love you, Commissioner Chestnut. You're a very graceful, graceful woman, and I thank you. When you were chair for the county commission, you were very graceful, many, and offered me water and, and, and liked when the people came to speak. So I'm good to see you today. Mayor Ward, commissioners, my name is Richard Selwak, Gainesville resident and owner of the Best Jewelry and Loan Pawnbrokers, the colorful building with the black and white checkered steps at Northwest 5th Street and Northwest 3rd Avenue, serving the community there for over 41 years. The reason why I am here today is because of violation of sunshine laws, failure to notify, notify. You gave Santa Fe College license agreement on the street that leads to my front door for $40, $1 a year for 40 years without notifying me or the neighbors. I believe this agreement was not done in the sunshine. Both Santa Fe and the city should have notified me and the neighbors, and I'm, I'm an enclave within the Santa Fe downtown campus. You knew or should have known to notify us, and you didn't. Public office is public trust, and you have violated this. The first question of public office is, did you notify the neighbors? And you didn't. This is not acceptable. The neighbors and I had no input. Ed Book and I walked a few blocks yesterday along 5th Street from my shop to 4th Avenue, the old Malden's Auto Glass that Santa Fe wants to knock down and put their auto program there, and he mentioned at a meeting that he had asked if neighbors were notified. He also did not vote on this item because he was in Alaska at the time. Commissioner Willis, hi, Commissioner Willis, thank you for emailing me. Commissioner Willis emailed me on 11/12/25 that he made a motion at your last meeting about notification and agreed there is an issue with notification. Quote, "I agree that not enough notification was given to the neighbors by city staff because we didn't have clear policy established for this specific type of agreement." It's better to err on the side of notification instead of non-notification, and this has got you into trouble, Mr. Mayor. You are the chair and should have made sure this requirement was done and you chose to ignore it. I'm asking you to keep the road open because it's a disingenuous argument to close the street because Santa Fe needs the street to test cars. Santa Fe has enough land to test cars at their campus without closing the public street. Santa Fe closed Northwest 5th Street at University Avenue when they built that new building and got away with that. Now they want to close me down by taking the two-way street from my front door to 5th Avenue, making it difficult for neighbors and customers to get to me. You are cutting off my customers and putting me out of business, and this is wrong. Thank you for allowing me to talk, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Selwak.
Thank you.
Valerie Phillips?
So I gotta tell you, that, that was way more kind than you told me it was gonna be.
Oh, I told you down after I talked to you. Do not want to know what it was originally was. Oh, my gosh. Oh, was that bad?
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Welcome, Ms. Phillips.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am here because of the same concern that Mr. Richard has, right? I have a restaurant on 5th Avenue, right across from Santa Fe College, and my customer come that way to come up to me, right? I've been in that section for over 27 years, right? We used to park on the side by Santa Fe profit, their, um, property. They allowed us to park there. Something went wrong and they fenced it around, so we has, we couldn't park there anymore. When they were building the Blunt Center across the street, they didn't notify the community. We found out that Friday morning when they were digging ground, and that is very disrespectful. We are not dead people on that street or in that community. We are live, tax-paying residents, okay? Then they bought the church, they've been trying to buy that church for over 20 odd years. They said that church didn't have any papers, no title, no diagram, no nothing. Then all of a sudden, Santa Fe was able to get diagram titled and they bought it. They bought the Malden Building. Then they're gonna put mechanic shop. I'm all for the mechanic shop. I am not for closing off the street. That is a no-no. Santa Fe has enough property right beside a restaurant that they can use a part of that or use a part of their now parking lot that they use to test car. You don't have to close off the street to do that, right? Or make that a daycare center for our young men and women, single parents, daycare, and then put the mechanic shop across where the Plasma Center is. That is more lucrative to do a mechanic shop, and then you have your parking that you can test your cars, right? And with that, closing the street, that's going to affect my business, right? That's my livelihood. I don't have anything else to do. That is. And right now, I'm too young to go out to find another job. Right there, I'm running the business by myself. My husband is sick, and I have to tend to him and tend to business, the business, and then tend with Santa, Santa Fe trying to close the street. Commissioners, we vote for you. Please, we are pleading. I'm begging you. Reconsider. Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both for, for being here. We do not have this on the agenda today, um, but thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. I appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I would like to have lunch with you sometime so we could maybe take a walk like I did with Mr. Book. Could you maybe pencil me in and have someone of your staff contact me?
I'll have the office set something up. I will.
Thank you. And you can invite some of the other commissioners as well.
Well, we can all go at the same time, but.
Well, that's okay. Doesn't matter. I love you, Ms. Chestnut.
Thank you. The outdoors over here. Ma'am, out this way. Thank you. We need to get arrows on the floor to make it easier for people. We really do. And Madam Clerk, if you will advise staff to help me set something up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'll get that together. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're on to our business discussion items for the afternoon. 2025-910 Imagine G and B Comprehensive Plan Update. With recommendation, the City Commission discussed the proposed timeline for the comprehensive plan, Imagine G and B, and if necessary, provide guidance to staff on next steps. And I do have an update to the backup, if you will pass that down.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Nathaniel Chan, Planner for the City of Gainesville, Department of Sustainable Development. I'm also the lead on the comprehensive plan update. So I wanted to apologize for not being at the meeting last week. Um, probably I didn't notice, but I wanted to be here to present that to you all or to just listen in and, uh, answer questions if you had any, but I did watch the meeting and, uh, put together this timeline for you all based on what you all, uh, discussed. So I actually wanted to request the overhead if that's possible. The printed copies that you all have are just slightly different. They're relatively the same in terms of the, the dates and the timelines, but, um, just wanted to direct your attention to, uh, this version here and the one that you have in front of you. Uh, so the way that the timeline was put together is sort of twofold. It was, uh, taking into account what we know in the current future as far as where we are today, and then the, uh, request to have the adoption hearing in April, so that's the, the end piece, and then so sort of filled in all of the gaps in between, um, to come up with the timeline for you all. Uh, so I just wanted to start maybe here in November to where we are. So, uh, here at, uh, November 13th, that was last week, you all had, uh, reviewed the draft and looked at it, and, um, I really appreciate your feedback on, um, what you had to say. I'm taking that into account and hoping I can give you, um, something you're looking forward to seeing again. Um, this is where we are today in, uh, you know, November 20th, uh, so reviewing the timeline, and the draft is also posted online for, um, everyone to see and view and make comments. Um, so also still here in November, uh, we have both the City Commission and the City Plan Board sort of, uh, sending information, uh, to staff in the city manager's office, or, um, for the Plan Board, it's to sustainable development, uh, for us to hear feedback, um, in advance of their next meeting. So, um, starting to work through, making sure that, um, we get that early and as soon as possible, given that the timeline is, uh, quite rapid. Um, but those two dates are here, and then on the bottom here, I have, um, the two engagement pieces. So, um, the online engagement with Conveyo, um, that was briefly mentioned. Uh, Conveyo is a great, uh, website that we had used in the past for public engagement, and it allows users to put comments directly on the, the PDF online, and it is also publicly available, so you can see what other people are commenting, um, and it's really easy and simple to use. The other thing that I wanted to mention about Conveyo that's great is that it does have, um, like an AI search as well. So if there's something, um, that you're interested in, um, it just reads the document for you. It scans it essentially. It doesn't pull anything from the internet. Um, and let's say I, I'm interested in bike paths or how trees are being conserved, you can type a question, and it'll point you to a, a better place rather than just having, you know, I heard the 200 pages is, is boring and, you know, hard to get through, but that will maybe help with getting into the document a little more curated to what you're interested in seeing. Uh, this, the second bottom part here is for stakeholder engagement. Um, I put stakeholder because we will be, um, involving city staff from other departments as the draft is moving forward and taking into account the comments, um, pertaining to different departments, um, as well as, uh, partner organizations, and then I've listed a couple, um, that were mentioned at the meeting and others that we can engage with, including Gainesville Neighborhood Voices, Gainesville is for People, Can U Be First Neighborhoods, and any others that, um, you all recommend. Uh, if you have a, a contact or a person that you'd like for us to reach out to, I'm happy to do that. So that's, um, all of November. Um, so these things are sort of ongoing at the bottom, um, and all of the dates here are meetings that are currently on the schedule. So moving into December, um, we have a GPC meeting, uh, there for you all to discuss the comments that you have provided to staff. Um, and then there is also the Plan Board meeting in December on the 18th. After that, um, you know, we're taking our holiday break to get all of your comments in, try to make edits as best we can while people are on the holidays, and then we are planning to come back to you all in January on the 22nd at the GPC meeting to review, um, that revised version based on what you all have said, based on what, um, you know, the Plan Board has said and others. Um, and then there's another, on the same day, um, the City Plan Board meeting where they'll also be reviewing the draft again, because I imagine it'll take a little bit to get through, um, their feedback. So skipping a little bit ahead, um, we worked backwards from here, so there's the May due date here, um, for the Evaluation and Appraisal Report. Um, that's the letter that goes out to the state that, um, is there, and then the, uh, desire for the final adoption hearing in April. Um, so we kind of worked backwards from that sense, um, for first reading in March, and then, um, the second reading in April, and that we're filling in sort of the gaps for, uh, the ordinance drafting in February, um, after the adoption hearing from the Plan Board. I know I'm kind of going all over the place, but, um, just trying to explain that we're working backwards and forwards. Um, but I am open to your feedback and any questions that you have and suggestions on the timeline.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So I'm not sure where the stakeholder engagement occurs.
Great question. Um, so currently it's placed, um, sort of as of today. It doesn't have a definitive date, time, or location. I think what we're planning to do is sometime between today, right, and, um, before any sort of adoption hearings, we'll be reaching out to different groups, um, as their schedule is available, as ours is as well. During, you know, the November and December months, it's a little bit harder for folks to meet, but, um, we want to make sure that we start that as soon as possible, and so we're gonna be, um, setting up different meetings, um, with whatever works with their schedule, reaching out. Um, again, if you all have contacts or people that you specifically would like us to reach out to and get feedback from, uh, please let me know, um, or our office know, and we'll, um, try to schedule that, but it's too hard to nail down a date for that at this stage.
Okay, but you do intend to have stakeholder engagement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are, um, two things I wanted to, to point out with the, uh, with the timeline and the process. Um, the first is, as you can see, um, right around the kind of February, March timetable, it gets pretty tight with, uh, Plan Board and then Commission. Um, so, um, one thing I, I do want to, I, I know we're, we're working, you know, under the commission's, um, direction to try to get this, you know, kind of wrapped up in, in May, and, and the schedule, I think, before you is doable, um, albeit, albeit it is gonna be tight. And so, um, so that's all to say that, uh, at some point, probably in the, kind of in that January timeline, where we, um, we're gonna, you know, stop and kind of evaluate where we are, and if need be, um, what, what we'll do is, uh, or what we'll suggest to the commission is similar to what we did, um, with the last, you know, year process. Again, like, our only obligation is to inform the state, um, whether or not we're going to be undertaking the year process, the Evaluation Appraisal Report process, um, under statute. We don't have to follow that process, um, but we do have to make sure that the, uh, comprehensive plan is consistent with, um, the statute. And so what we did last time was essentially reviewed the plan internally, determined it is consistent, and sent the letter, uh, to the state, um, to that effect, which then, um, doesn't preclude the city into, in terms of, um, of updating the plan. So, so I don't want you necessarily to. So I don't want you necessarily to look at the schedule and see where there's some pinch points and be like, oh, gosh, we gotta, we may get kind of jammed up, because at some point, if we feel like there's that February or that May date is not going to be realistic, then we're going to recommend to you all that we just send a letter to the state and say that, you know, we're good on the year process, so give us a little bit more time so to make sure we, you know, we fully finish this process. That said, I absolutely don't want to be talking about the comp plan in fall, and so I think we're going to still stick to getting this done. But I do want to make sure that you all feel that there is a little bit of give there. The second thing I wanted to mention is, as we're going through this process, we are likely, and I've been speaking a little bit with staff, we're likely to solicit some outside assistance in terms of reviewing the plan for any statutory consistency, just to get an extra set of eyes. We can do this as we're going through all the other process, and I think we'll be able to hopefully wrap that up before we come back to you in January for the hearing, or for the meeting in January. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Nate, for all of your hard work on this. I know that this is, it's the planning department that's here to talk to us about all of this, but of course, this is multi-departmental, this goes to, so you've had to really coordinate across multiple areas to make sure that all this is going forward. And so, you know, thank you for all your work on this for the number of years it's been, you know, that's been ongoing. I will say, Mr. Manager, to your point about the, I like the May first deadline for, I, what, this has been, so our last, it's, like, when I go on the website, I see twenty thirteen was some of the earlier ones that were in here, so I guess that's the last time that we did a formal EAR, is that right? Maybe about twelve, thirteen years ago. We did, we started this process in twenty nineteen or so. We're now in twenty twenty-five. I'll go into that. I'd rather get this right, because this is just, this is not a traditional, like, traditionally what cities are doing is you do all the data analysis for all of this, and then you guys would come to us and say, here are the policies that are no longer statutorily required, we'd like to put that in land development code, like, this is, and, like, we just want to update this thing marginally because we think this would give more consistency, right? I mean, that is my understanding of a typical comp plan update process, right? It's just a, kind of like what the county is doing right now with their EAR, where they're saying this objective, we'd rather have it be this language, that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, the, I mean, essentially, statute lays out every seven years that you, you know, that local jurisdictions go through this EAR process, not required, but typically it is, the year process has a one-year timeline that's laid out in statute and is primarily there just to review changes in state law against your comprehensive plan. As the Commission knows, or may or may not know, you know, we monitor state law, and when state law changes, such as when the state required changes to subdivision ordinance or when the state required all cities and counties to have a property rights element, we respond, you know, directly. We don't wait for any year process to do that. And so typically, we try to make sure that the comprehensive plan is consistent with state law, you know, sort of as we go, not once every seven years.
Yeah, it's, this is, of course, but this is not the same thing the county is, I mean, we did a complete rewrite of everything, right? I mean, it's not, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out, okay, well, this objective was there, where is that in the new Imagine G and B? I mean, it's kind of thing that if we're not crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, we could get lost in the shuffle of things, like, if there's important policies that are here that aren't there, or if things don't get moved appropriately into the land development code that were previously in there, it's just, I am happy to push it back. I also don't want us to be here like, okay, well, now we've pushed it back, so in three or four years, we'll get back to it again, like, where I think, I think it's time for us to do, to update our comprehensive plan. This has been ongoing for a long time. I also just, I, you know, if we need the extra time to make sure that everything is good, because this is, as I said, a complete rewrite of everything, I want to make sure that we have the time to do that. And I think, and that's really important to me. I mean, before, so, and I was going to say this, before we get to May first, I would like to see us, I mean, what, because it's not a typical EAR process, what policies have changed? Like, where are there actual, are there actually policy distinctions between the last version and the new version? What are those? What are we voting on exactly? Are we sure that each, that the enforcement mechanisms that we had in the first one are there? Because as, you know, as kind of dry and not as, you know, pretty as the last one was, I mean, it was, it had been standing there for twenty years, right? I mean, we kind of knew where, we knew where the holes were, and this is the kind of thing that developers in particular will try to poke holes in, right? It's the kind of thing that they will look toward to say, okay, well, what loopholes can we get through? Where can we go this, that, or the other way? And we need to make sure that those aren't in there. And so I, yeah, if we need that extra time on May, by May first to do that, that's fine, but I also, I would probably at that point say to do another, you know, timeline, because we need to be at this, in the completed box, right? And then we can worry about another EAR in seven years or so, whenever that comes up. But, yeah, I would like, I, before I feel comfortable going forward with it, I would like staff to say, okay, well, here is the, even if it's just personally with me, here are the policies that are changing, or this, this might not be in the original, this might be in the old comp plan, it's not in the new one, but that's fine, because it was erroneous in the last one anyway, it didn't matter that that was in there. Things like that that will make me feel comfortable until, I mean, until I see that, I won't, I do not want to submit something to the state until we are sure that we have all of that in hand and that we know that this will stand up to the scrutiny, that we know it'll get under, because this is what determines whether, you know, that, how our built environment is, and we want to make sure that we are having a good built environment, and there will be people that will try to find holes in it and try to find things in there to try to get things through, and we need to make sure that we're standing strong on that stuff. So I got more thoughts when I can move along to other stuff, but I really appreciate all those. Oh, I guess I do have a question. So we're going to submit things over, and I've already submitted to you guys some things that are mostly in that, where this old objective, where's this new objective? We're supposed to submit that to you on, by December eleventh, right? And then are we reviewing? I mean, what is, what is the process of the things, like, let's say, I submit something, I say, okay, I think we should have more, we should have more public art in more places, is something that I was considering, I think I'll send over to you guys, just, you know, have more of a, more visioning statement about the importance of public art in our community that's non-controversial. I mean, at what point does that, do you guys review that? Does that get brought forward to us, the City Commission, for a thumbs up, thumbs down, a review? I mean, what does that look like for those of us that are planning on sending amendments to that, with the two GPC meetings we'll be reviewing?
January twenty-second.
What's that?
January twenty-second.
Okay, so then what are we doing on December eleventh?
More of the same.
Okay, great. All right, well, let's have, that is the idea, is that there would be multiple review cycles of this at that point? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's correct. So to answer your question, we will be receiving all of your information, your comments, your yays, your nays, your, everything in between, hopefully, so that we can, you all can discuss it at the December eleventh meeting. And then between then and the January twenty-second meeting, we'll hopefully have opportunity to incorporate some of that into the one that you're reviewing on January twenty-second.
Okay, so by, so you would probably want it before December eleventh, so you can have a chance to actually review some of the updates and things at that point. I mean, I would imagine that would be, if it's due on December eleventh, so I turn it and say, I would like, you know, I think that we should have, that trees are important, that's an object, that is an objective underneath the goal of environmentalism. The City of Gainesville has lots of cool trees around. That would be an objective, right? I'd send that to you guys the morning of December eleventh. I don't see a lot of timeline between that and you guys reviewing and saying, Commissioner, we don't want cool trees in the city, or whatever that would be, like, just as an example, but like, how does this timeline work? I want to make sure that I'm giving you guys in a lead way so that, you know, you can give me feedback or give us feedback, and we can make determinations on some of these policy changes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, Forrest Edleton, Director of Department of Sustainable Development. So I think the idea here is for really starting right now, today, if you can get us your feedback and input, as you have already gotten to us, we're starting to put that all together into overall combination of documents, of comments that we get from you all, the Plan Board, and now that we do have the comp plan online, any sort of comments that we get through that way. Our plan is for what we get is to compile that so that on the eleventh here, we can come back and tell you, here's what we have to date so far, here's the conversations that are going, here's what we do recommend, here are things that we still need more time to analyze, here are things that we're just going to run with because it sounds like it is common sense or something along those lines. Wanting to be conscious of us not giving you all due dates and deadlines, please continue all the way up to December eleventh. Please continue to give us your comments and feedback all the way up to this January twenty-second. That's going to open it up and give a lot more time over the holidays, both to you all and, of course, to the Plan Board members and the public as well. We will continue to put those all together and continue to offer that analysis at each of these meetings for that. What makes sense? Should it go in the land development code? Should we throw it in the garbage? Should we put it in the comp plan? All of those. We'll give you feedback for that as we go.
Right, thank you, Forrest, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, and Mr. Willetts.
So similar to Mayor Proton Eastman, I have a similar, that kind of, some of the side-by-side change is sort of a, kind of a crosswalk, where does it, you know, and I know in our previous idea, there was a lot more of a need for fully understanding that crosswalk. People complained it was confusing. This is, it sounds like it's going to be a little more straightforward. I had that similar, I just kind of want to, and I've got both of them printed, so I can look them side, literally side-by-side, but I have that similar, so there may be, I don't know, from staff in some of the meetings, that we kind of do that real, so that we don't lose anything that's somewhere in the details, some of those things that change. It will, we'll end one of those, particularly those two GPCs, that's where we can see a little, ask a little, have some of those side-by-side changes.
Absolutely, both of those meetings, that's one of our intentions.
Okay, great, that helps me understand. And then I just want to say, thank you so much, thank you, staff, thank you, Nate, thank you, Forrest, thank you, Mr. Manager. I think this is what I was looking for to understand, so I can tell the public, so I can tell the interest groups, the Plan Board. This is probably in y'all's head, it's probably in the attorney's head, that they understand some of this when things have to happen and where, or the fact that ordinance happened, you know, at some point between meetings and, so some of this is in staff's head, but it's not always in our head. Thank you so much for doing the work. I know it may have felt a little extra, extra work, but it absolutely is what I intended when I asked for, so thank you so much to all the staff. This helps really understand and where people can get involved, technically the public, even though the purple is the engagement, almost every single one of these is a public meeting, almost besides some of the staff stuff, right? These are all public meetings, so thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. To your point, I count, not including today, seven public meetings between now and the end of this calendar, and there will be other engagements, I'm a hundred percent certain. Commissioner Buck.
And we also intend, as Nate mentioned, to do additional meetings with the community partners, that's to add a little bit of explanation. Same thing, we intend for that to start, you know, days ago through this whole process, and then we'll continue all the way through at least March here, as you see, and we'll be establishing meetings and attending those meetings and inviting people in as well.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So dito on what Commissioner Willetts said, and Planner Chan, I think this is terrific. I think we should stick to the timeline as much as possible, Mr. Manager. You know, once we've been working on it for years, it is a complex document, but it's going to be a major compliment, and I think it'll be a major accomplishment, not just for the city, but for your staff to finish it and submit it to, and then be thinking about the other twenty projects that they have on their plate that they're working on simultaneously. So as much as possible, my opinion would only be, let's stick with as much as possible the timeline that we have here, and if it has to move for a few weeks or a month or something, because we wanted to make sure it was as tight as possible and the staff were as comfortable as possible with our submission, well, that's probably going to be no problem from a colleague's perspective. Thanks for posting it online, understanding, Mr. Manager, you had said we got online, and that's a critical piece of stakeholder engagement, so thanks for that. And all I would say is, I know we're creating work for you all, but maybe we can help. If, Mr. Manager, you think of maybe a leaflet or a flyer or just a little handbill, we all go to a fair amount of things, and if we have that in our hands, with a QR code that goes directly to it, we'll head into the meeting, and we'll hand out twenty, and you'll get comments back. You'll get them right on the PDF, I think you said, or, you know, perhaps in other mechanisms, that's something at least to consider, but if you provide something to that, I would bet that we will have a fair amount of stakeholder engagement, even beyond what you all formally do, just by virtue of the fact that we're all over the place and we're in so many different forums, we can hand those out. So just a thought, if you have that, and that could even be before the holidays, so, thank you very much. This is, one last thing is, I mentioned this before, wherever we have Imagine G and V, we probably should have something that says comprehensive plan on it, because no matter what we think it is, people will not know what it is in the community. They'll say, what is Imagine G and V? And they'll have a lot of different ideas they'll imagine, but it probably won't be comprehensive plan, so it's just a thought, that, it's just me. That should probably be anywhere we have that term, we should also have the term comprehensive plan written on that same document, so people understand what it is. But that's not a motion, that's just a suggestion. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Manager, and this is good. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. Thank you for bringing this to us. I think it is a doable timeline. I was just looking to make sure that I was correct, but Florida Legislature does all its business from committee weeks to signee die in about six months. A hundred and sixty, forty and a hundred and twenty legislators and legislating for nearly twenty-four million people every year, they manage to get that done. Now, we're on a different scale, and I'm not saying Florida Legislature is absolutely a paradigm we should follow, but it is possible for us to get this done. And I firmly believe that no matter what our deadline is, we're going to do it all in about six months. If we said, oh, let's do it in a year, or two years, or three years, we're going to do it all in about six months, because we're humans, and that's how humans react to deadlines. So I'm confident that we can make this work. Again, there are seven public meetings already on the schedule, not counting engagement that goes on outside to groups that we know are very interested, that I'm sure you all will be engaging with, and I know some of them have already engaged with many or most of us. So, yes, it is tight, it is also possible, so that would be my preference that we do that. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
All right, does anybody like to make a motion to adopt this? Or to come up with something different?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, very good. All right, then, say no for the whites. Madam Clerk, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, we are on to twenty twenty-five nine two-three Gainesville Police Department Quarterly Update, with the recommendation the City Commission receives the quarterly update.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager.
Pull that towards you a little bit there.
Yes, sir, sorry.
That's all right.
Major Jamie Kernick, Gainesville Police Department. I wanted to extend the apologies on behalf of Chief Moyet today for not being here. Chief Moyet is very, very ill, and so this is the first time he's not made it into work, so he did want to apologize, because he did want to be here, and if I can ask for a moment of your grace, just to introduce two new members of our command staff. And so let me introduce Captain Marquita Brown. Captain Brown got promoted on October twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, just a couple weeks ago. She comes from our Personnel Division, and as you remember from our previous conversations about the Personnel Division, we've hired almost seventy people in the last two years. This division was led by Captain Brown, and her innovative recruitment, her plans, just the creativity has brought so many more members to the Gainesville Police Department and got our vacancies to a great place. She will now be in charge of downtown, midtown, and southwest Gainesville, the student areas, and she has hit the ground running, so we are very blessed to have Captain Brown. And our second captain is Captain Timothy Durst, and Tim has been with us for twenty-seven years. He comes from the Internal Affairs Division after three-plus years there and a long-tenured career with us. He is also going to the Operations Division, and he will be working all of the northwest, northeast, and some of the southeast neighborhoods. So these are our two new captains in operations, and along with these two, we've had some reassignments. So Captain Paris Owens will be over our Administrative Services Bureau, and Captain Summer Hallett will actually be over our Criminal Investigations Division. So we went from two captains to four, and for some needed help, and they are showing great leadership in just a few weeks, so I wanted to take time to congratulate them and to introduce them.
Excellent, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so beginning with the quarterly, once again, the Gainesville Police Department missions. Once again, the Gainesville Police Department missions, um, these are our top four items that we continue to focus on. Violent crime, traffic safety, our homeless outreach, and of course recruiting police officers. We're going to look at the quarterly statistics of what we're doing here in the city to talk about our violent and our property crimes. So from July 1st to September 30th, basically you're going to see a reduction in both, both property and violent crimes. So the nice part is, is I love when you see zeros at the top of any chart. And so zero homicides, zero traffic homicides for this reporting period. Our rape category went from 42 to 34 for a 19% reduction. Our robbery went from 49 to 33 for a 32% reduction. And a little bit of an uptick in our ag assault area with just a 9% increase. And sometimes that happens, it's just an ebb and flow. We had a negative 4% reduction for this time period in violent crime. And our property crime reduction actually is 18.74% for these three months. The next slide I'm going to go to is actually year to date, so it'll give you a January 1 through September 30th look at our crime numbers. And I will be honest, they look exceptionally well. Our homicide numbers went from 2024, they were at eight. We are currently holding at three for this year with a 62% reduction.
And that remains true as of right now.
As of right this moment.
September 30th, yeah.
Yes, sir, and I apologize, yes, sir, and, and right now. Um, our homicide for THI, this is the number that the state mandates we report where a person is responsible for the death of another person, um, in a THI. So you'll see some THI numbers that are a little different than this, but this is just a state mandated report. We're at one for this year compared to four of last year for a 75% reduction. Our rape category went from 112 to 109 for a 2.68% reduction. Our robbery went from 158 to 88 for a 44% reduction. And our aggravated assault went from 495 to 452 for an 8.69% reduction. And total violent crime, we're down 15.96% so far this year, and that's excellent numbers to be tracking. And not that I don't want to focus on property crime, we are seeing equal crimes and equal number dropping. In terms of that, we're at a 16% reduction there. Um, but our total focus is the victims of violent crime right now. We know it's an epidemic, we do, you know, answer and respond and investigate the property crimes also, but, uh, definitely a focus on that. Grand total for both property and violent crime is 16% so far this year, um, as compared to last year. I'm going to show one extra slide for our monthly or our gun related statistics. Normally I don't show you a month snapshot of it, but I wanted to put this up here because it honestly surprised me. Um, if you look, and the only number I want you to focus on on this slide is the number of shots fired, which is zero. So for the month of September, we had zero shots fired call, calls. I have, in, in my career, never experienced this, and this is an anomaly for us. But what you will see in the next three slides is those reductions continue to go down. So we're starting to see a trend of less, and that's a very good thing. Here is the quarterly look at the first three quarters of this year and what we're looking at in terms of our stolen firearms and our gun related statistics. So stolen firearms from last quarter, which would have been April 1st to June 30th, to July 1st to September 30th, we had 52, uh, stolen firearms in that, in that second quarter. In the third quarter, we've had 20. But the, the number to really focus on is how many of those stolen firearms came out of vehicles. And so we continue to ask the public to lock their cars and secure their firearms, because a good majority of all the firearms stolen come out of unlocked vehicles. Uh, firearm seized or recovered by law enforcement. We had 91 in quarter two and 65 in quarter three for a 25, or 28% reduction. Our number of shots fired from the second quarter was 21, down to 13 for a 38% reduction. And the number of persons shot went from seven to four for a 42% reduction. And so as you can tell, our homicides also, uh, went from two to zero, and so that's an excellent number. And I remember us being asked about the number of suicides. We're also seeing those numbers go down from four to two for a 50% reduction. And this, once again, is just the numbers on the quarter, which we just went over. And just to look at, at what we're looking at for the last three months. Go one more slide. This gives us a year to date from 24 to 25. And so violent crime in these categories, we watch monthly, we watch quarterly, and we watch yearly. In 2024, we had 204 firearm seized, we're at 210 this year so far. Our stolen firearms went from 47 in '24 to '27 in '25. Now convicted felon arrests, these are individuals who are arrested in possession of a firearm, went from 35 last year to 21 this year. In adjudicated delinquent arrests, those are juveniles who have had a previous criminal conviction, who've been arrested in possession of a firearm, went from eight to four. So all of our numbers, as you can tell, are pretty much trending in a, in a downward progression. Now, we look at the shots fired map and, and look at the areas of the city that have, um, shots fired calls throughout the city. And so in yellow, it is the first quarter, the green is the second quarter of the year, and the pink is the third quarter. But what you can tell is that every quadrant of the city is affected by this with the heat maps. The northwest, the northeast, the southeast and the southwest. So we have some areas of focus and to look at and to do increased patrols. And this gives our officers an idea of where they need to do those increased patrols and what's going on throughout the city. But it also gives you a little bit of an idea about, you know, how many we've had and what this map looks like. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to transition to Captain Summer Hallett. She's actually going to come up and talk about the Criminal Investigations Division.
Good afternoon. Um, so again, Captain Summer Hallett, I just recently transferred to the Criminal Investigations Unit, so I'm, um, I have some big shoes to fill following Captain Owens. Um, this is our gun violence unit for July through September 30th of 2025. We had 132 traffic stops by our unit and, um, 52, um, arrests, I'm sorry, yes. Gun violence arrests, warrant complaints, and warrants. For the rest of our Investigations Bureau, major crimes, which is, um, our A squad, so robbery, homicide, violent crimes, there were 39 cases assigned and 19 cases closed. Major crimes, um, which is B squad, such as child and sex crimes and domestic violence, there were 178 assigned cases and 69 of those cases, or of the cases that we have, were closed. Property crimes, so burglary, grand theft, um, grand theft auto, we had 209 cases assigned and 60 of the, 60 closed. Um, our internet crimes against children exploitation unit, 148 cases assigned and 64 of those were closed. And then, um, our special operations unit, financial crimes, so fraud, um, theft, those sort of things. Um, 97 assigned and 41 of those were closed. And so that, again, all those numbers are from the time period of July 1st to September 30th. Any questions for you?
I'll see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
All right, so moving from personnel, um, there's a, a lot of responsibility that I've learned that the Operations Bureau was handling. And so I'm very inspired by it, but I'll try to just go through some of the efforts that we, uh, focused on in Operations Bureau with that this quarter. Um, during this quarter, GPD worked diligently to address several areas that were identified in our surrounding efforts in the houseless outreach area. We addressed several encampments. Uh, we can go to the next slide, I don't know if someone's doing it. I gotta do it?
There you go.
Oh, all right, I'll note that for the next time. Um, the manner in which, uh, these areas were addressed included a holistic approach and a collaborative effort uh, between several city entities to include GPD, code enforcements, public works, business owners, citizens, and many of the, uh, community partners. So the areas focused on, um, included Grace Marketplace. Uh, GPD conducted a lot of increased patrols, Public Works assisted, uh, regularly, um, just attending to the Old Dignity Village area, and just by keeping up the maintenance out there, whether it's keeping the grass cut, uh, making sure nothing overgrows. Um, they communicated with GPD when they observed individuals in the area. That way we can keep it to where no one's gathering in those areas again. Most importantly, uh, the safety boundary around Grace was maintained. Um, along the outer perimeter of Grace, there were complaints about the right of way being blocked. Once again, the communication between GPD and Public Works was great. Public Works went out there, put up some no blocking signs. A referral in reference to narcotics sales was provided to GPD. Um, right outside of Grace, there was like a raised cemented area and a tree where subjects were selling narcotics. GPD patrol officers, um, enforced that area quite a bit, and Public Works actually came out, removed the tree and removed the cemented area. And I will tell you, the narcotics sales ceased immediately from the actions that were taken. The 900 Northeast 31st Avenue area, which is, which are those pictures that you see, the before and after, that is actually where one of our sergeants was actually bit by a dog. He's, uh, he's okay. The area was addressed and remains an area for, uh, increased patrols. The downtown area, um, actually is one of the areas that specifically under me, and I'm very pleased and thankful for the efforts in the downtown area that I've seen thus far. But just for this previous quarter, uh, the daytime detail that GPD has been putting on, it goes from 0600 to 1200 hours with two officers, and from 1200 hours to 1800 hours, seven days a week. So that area is pretty, um, impacted and, and monitored daily. And the impact from it has been focusing in the Rosa Parks section, I'm sorry, Rosa Parks Bus Station, the Sun Center, CMC, the Thomas Center, and Roper Park, which are all up there on your screen. Each of these areas had its own complaints. Sun Center, um, dealing with a lot of, of individuals needing to be trespassed by the business owners. Um, the CMC, some trash dumping, but mostly just trying to maintain that area. The Rosa Parks Bus Station, uh, complaints of overnight encampment or, um, the workers not being able to get into the doors, uh, once they come into work early mornings. The Thomas Center, um, dealing with houseless subjects. And so the officers, um, in that area, I'd like to say, instead of being in your vehicle, this gives us a chance to actually be out on foot and conduct foot patrols, which allows us to engage a lot more in these areas. And so far, this has also increased our response times to calls for service in the area made by the citizens and business owners. Um, the presence of the officers in these areas have allowed for a deterrence in criminal activity. Um, the officers are proactively observing activity that needs to be attended to, um, and also answering to referrals, um, and making referrals to the appropriate city entities. They're using my GMV, the officers are able to identify resources needed for individuals, providing additional support, and dealing with trespass complaints and more. The downtown night shift unit also is included in this, equally making an impact, um, just providing safety for patrons that visit the downtown area in the nighttime for, uh, you know, for those activities at night, whether it's restaurants or several other clubs. And we have received, uh, great feedback from the business owners. We've been attending and trying to grow the downtown business owners meeting, so that's been good. And we'll just continue these efforts, um, to engage and be present in the community. Any questions?
I'll see you lights, so, thank you.
Um, part of the Operations Bureau, which we'll talk a little bit about community engagement, is us answering calls for service. And so, you know, we typically don't highlight that often, but in the last, during this quarter, we actually answered 23,546 calls for service. And so if you think about our patrol division and who's out there when people call, that's a lot for, you know, us to maintain as a city, 23,000. And so we average anywhere from 90 to 110,000 calls for service a, a year. And, um, I want to say thank you to the efforts of those officers who are working downtown and in several of our, our problem areas, especially the ones working on violent crime, because they're definitely making a difference. When we talk about community engagement, we wanted to bring a highlight to the PAVE event. This is the annual event, this year it happened at MLK, only because Santa Fe College was having their gym floor redone. I know Commissioner Book, it's, uh, an event close to your heart, sir. Um, and so we had the, a tent out front and the kids had to pledge the, an anti-violence pledge with our, one of our community coordinators, his name is Dalton Johnson, he runs our GPAL program. And so, um, he was doing games and engaging the kids out front. But this is just one event in this three month period. Uh, this three month period, we went to 79 different engagements as the Gainesville Police Department. We went to 27 community meetings, we attended 26 events which we did not host. Um, you know, other community groups hosted them, we attended. Uh, the Porter's Community Event, Chief came up and actually spoke at that one. We actually hosted 18 events where different community organizations came, and that's from, it could be from any engagement, including traffic safety, um, community engagement in terms of our GPAL program. And GPAL specifically had eight specific events. So the Gainesville Police Department is committed to getting out in the community, listening to our neighbors, and attending as many events as we possibly can. This is our way to build trust with the community, is just to be there and meet them where they are. Never hosting an event at the PD, but always going into the community. And so it's very important to us that we do that. The next is our co-responder unit, this is where our officers are paired with a mental health clinician. Currently, we have three mental health clinicians that are assigned. We have one vacancy and we're hoping to fill that by the end of the year for a clinician. So I would put a call out to all clinicians who might be listening to the meeting. We are looking for someone to come and impact the community. And so in the third quarter, these four officers answered 673 calls for service. That's a lot of calls for service, including 31 Baker Acts, 44 voluntary transports, transports. And what a voluntary transport is, is when someone says, I need help and I need a ride to Meridian or Vista, and they don't meet the criteria for Baker Acts and they want to take a ride. So we offer that service to get people mental health treatment. Jail diversions, we had 27. The Baker Act diversions, we had 33, and emergency room diversions, 15. And they are so impactful on our shifts and help the community get connected with services. Very similar to the paramedicine program that GFR runs. We meet them where they are, we respond to their homes, their locations, their businesses, or where they're at. And this unit is extremely impactful in the community.
If I could, uh, back you up to that one again. This is one of those rare, uh, sets of numbers where we want to see the numbers go up.
Yes.
And we, we want to see the, a, a positive increase for the most part. I want to see more calls for service for the coresponders unit, instead of just dispatching whoever's available. That means we're applying the right services to the right call here. I feel really good about the, the direction of this, and we have four units in play right now, is that accurate?
We do, we have four officers who are assigned, but we're missing one clinician. We had a clinician leave us to go to another, another place.
And the Sheriff's Office has?
They now have four.
Four, okay.
Um, they actually got two new clinicians, and by the beginning of the year, they will have two new deputies who will be assigned to those two clinicians.
And do we know what UPD has?
They have two.
Excellent.
And so GPD started the co-responder program in the county, we were the first. Um, and up until, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, we had the most teams, but now the Sheriff's Office is, is equal to us. And the resources train together, so we, you know, we work together and manage these calls for service and also work hand in hand with the paramedicine program. They refer people to us, we refer people to them, and they're very familiar and do training together also. So compliments to, to GFR too.
Absolutely, and, and to be clear, somebody has, has broken the law, somebody's hurt someone, whatever, there, there's a, a path for that. But, but this is not that, this is, this is someone needs help and that does not necessarily uh, need to, to end up, uh, at, at 39th Avenue, but, but needs help in another way. So I'm really glad that, that we are able to, to help.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And, uh, these, these officers care and make a huge difference in our community.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Anything else on that one?
Okay. Next, I'm going to introduce Lieutenant Mike West. Um, he is our 30-year recipient of the 30-year award earlier today, so, uh, he'll come up and talk about our traffic unit. He's just a rookie, be kind to him, okay?
I, I was gonna say, it looks like you've only been here a year or two.
Tell me age, tell me age. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. So I want to talk about the, um, traffic crash fatalities. So so far, we are at, for the quarter, uh, we just had one. So, so far, we are at, for the quarter, uh, we just had one. But, um, I guess most importantly, we, for twenty-twenty-five, we're at ten, um, uh, during the quarter, but now we're at fourteen. We just had one last night, um, a traffic homicide. So if you look at twenty-twenty-four, we finished the year out total with eighteen. Like I said, we're at fourteen right now. Um, if you look at the comparison of twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-four, accidents involving bike and pedestrians as far as fatalities, uh, we're at three. And in twenty-twenty-four, as far as total, we're at four. Oh, long way. There we go. All right, traffic stops. So, um, our department is, is pretty, been pretty busy. For the quarter, we had two thousand one hundred and twenty-five, uh, traffic stops. Uh, two thousand one hundred eighty-one of those resulted in, uh, traffic citations. And one thousand one hundred and fourteen, uh, with those were traffic warnings. So our traffic unit, um, is very, um, we try to partner with other agencies, being the Sheriff's Office, UPD, Elatcha PD, High Springs PD. Um, we call it in partnership with the other agencies. So we had probably, you could probably count during the quarter, we had like twenty-four, um, different, whether it was community service events, um, DUI details and such. Um, highlighted here is only four of them that I'll talk about. So the car seat checkup events, um, where we, well, actually, we have experts who are certified in car seats. They'll, our Sergeant Valdez and Officer Page, they will actually, um, look at your car seat, make sure those are put in properly if you want them checked. Uh, we did actually four of those during the quarter. Uh, moving on, so Operation Chomp Down, which is in partnership, and you, you see the, uh, Gainesville Police Department and all the other partnering agencies, uh, listed on there. They assisted in that. So that was August twenty-second. So also Operation Southern Slowdown, which is a campaign from July fourteenth to July nineteenth, involving partnership with other agencies. Um, that was, it was well-attended. Um, it's, it's definitely, um, needed and necessary where we go out in public and we, um, we educate, uh, whether through traffic citations, whether through warnings. And the good thing about it is, or the great thing about it is, it's in partnership with other agencies. So it's just not us. It's the, everyone in the county participating in that. And if you look over here, you see, um, the FDOT, Northeast Florida, and I'll try to share its office. The partnerships, uh, basically it was called Stop on Red Campaign, um, that was completed with, with, uh, various agencies in partnership. And, um, and, and really, that's kind of what it's all about. All of us together in partnership, trying to reduce traffic homicides, fatalities, uh, educate, um, the public, um, in various laws and the changes that are out there. And, um, it's, it's very, I'm very proud of the unit and the work that Sergeant Valdez has, has done thus far. Um, it's not easy. I've been a traffic homicide investigator for several years. And, um, um, it's, I, I've seen a lot and I've done a lot in, uh, when it comes to traffic homicides. And it's definitely not something to take lightly. Um, we're doing all we can to, to reduce the fatalities. And right now, thus far, we're, we're down as compared to last year, as I mentioned. But, uh, that's all I have so far. Any questions?
Very good. So we're not just down as compared to last year, we're down as compared to several years prior.
Yes, sir.
This is, I, I, we should not downplay that. I mean, and part of that is because, obviously, it's, it's the work of the people doing the work. I mean, you all are out there doing the work. I want to give FDOT some credit, um, because the work that they have done with us, dragging them every step of the way to, uh, to improve University Avenue in front of the University of Florida and at the other end of University Avenue, East University Avenue, those were dangerous places where people got hurt and killed a lot. And the, the new traffic measures in place in those places keep people from being hurt and killed in those places. So, so much of this is about engineering, and they have been, um, I, I will say, a, a great partner. You know, we're talking about partnerships in, in safety on, on those strips. Now, we got to talk to them about Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street. I mean, there, there's work that needs to be done there, as well as finishing out, uh, University Avenue. But, um, we should absolutely celebrate the fact that, that we're on a, a very positive downward trend here and, and celebrate everybody involved in, in that. So thank you all for, for all that work.
Thanks, sir. And if I would introduce, I guess, Captain Owens. I'm sure you know her.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Manager Persons. I'd like to bring up Lieutenant Joy Robinson. She will be your new Personnel Services Division Lieutenant. She followed me over from the Drug Task Force, so we'll be working closely together once again. And so I look forward to continuing to work with her. So, um, Captain Brown has laid a great foundation for us over in the Personnel Services Division. And so, of course, uh, during the, uh, quarter, there were a hundred and five, uh, police officer applications and four hired. We're on track to hire ten by the end of the year. So we look forward to continuing that trend and, um, just look forward to great time over in Administrative Services. Personnel is just one of the areas that I'll be taking over. I think I have about six other areas, but I look forward to it. So if you have any questions about personnel?
Well, and new hires is the metric that, that we pay the most attention to.
Absolutely.
So that's.
So I think that we'll end up with forty-one for the year, once we're done. So thank you, Captain Brown.
That, that, that is more than the chief promised at the beginning of the year, so yay.
We've had the opportunity to, I think, attend two, um, processes prior to our transfer. And we have some great candidates out there. Do you have anything to say? No? Twenty-five vacancies. So we'll be knocking those down.
Excellent. All right. That's what we like to hear. Thank you.
So this actually concludes our presentation for today, and I can entertain or answer any questions that you might have.
It was an excellent presentation. It's easy to have an excellent presentation when you have great things to report, right?
I, I told Chief Moya, he's welcome to take a, a day off anytime when we have sixteen percent reduction in violent crime.
Yes.
When we have a, a enormous reduction in THIs, right now fourteen, and we had eighteen last year. And at one point in, you know, a few years, we had twenty-four THIs in a year. We are seeing marked reductions in all crime areas, which is phenomenal to us.
And, and, and we don't want to, I don't want anybody to hear that, that we are celebrating and we're all done. As long as anyone is hurt, as, as long as, as anyone is, uh, needs our services, we need to make sure that, that we follow through and, and try to, to meet those needs before something bad happens. We, there's more work to do. But if we don't celebrate when we make progress, it's hard to make progress.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have several lights up here. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Major Kurnick. I just had a question about the robbery reduction, like forty-four percent. Normally, when there's a big, that big, you ask, do we code this right? That is, I mean, it's just very kind of dramatic. So is it, what, what's changed?
You know, the interesting part is, last year, we saw, and Captain Owens was over the Criminal Investigations Division, we were all kind of surprised. We had some business robberies, which we haven't had in a very long time. And, um, those, I will say, through the diligent work of the Detectives Division and those in patrol, we were able to hold several people accountable. And sometimes those individuals are responsible for more than one, or a spree, or a series. Um, and so we did see that last year, and we are not seeing that trend like we did last year. It has changed. And so sometimes that's, that's kind of causation, but.
All right. Thanks for that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Tessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have information on speeding in school zones and the red light cameras?
We do, and maybe I can ask Lieutenant West to come back up and give us a little more, because I think there's some progress in terms of the cameras in school zones.
Thank you.
So I would definitely say it's a big undertaking. Um, we're still trying to schedule meetings, like, as far as getting a magistrate who's going to hear, uh, the, the amount of citations that will result. So there's several steps that we're going through, and we're still in the process of, of figuring it out. Not figuring it out, but actually getting it done. So we're still working on it. So we don't, I don't have a, a true deadline, um, as far as where we are right now with that. But we're, even, like, even today, we just signed off on, um, well, I signed off on as part of, part of someone who will review the citations, and there's a list of them. I know Captain, they're signing off on it, and those who are going to be involved in actually reviewing the citations. So, um, we just completed that. So it's, it's always something. So we're still working on it.
So maybe the next time you bring a quarterly report.
Yes.
You may have some data then.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and is that for, um, for the, the school zone cameras as well as the red light cameras?
For the school zone cameras, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and the red light cameras?
And the same thing is, it's following, it's still a process. So we'll have something on, on next time coming.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Tessa. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff. I think, uh, a lot of times when we hear that we're going to get this report, um, I certainly can't speak for anybody else, but I kind of sit on the edge of my seat. And I have been able to sigh a sigh of relief, because, wow, all of these categories where we're looking at downward trends, I simply say thank you. One of the biggest things I want to say thank you for, though, is your willingness to work with other people. It's one thing to, to be, to have a job to do and to know how to do your job. But I've been getting increasing reports and phone calls from community members that are saying good things, and that is very important. Um, please keep up the good work in that regard. I do have a question with regards to the CRK.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a presence there now? Did I hear that we have now, uh, taken up a new undertaking? We have a presence in that building. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Absolutely. So we have given, we have a team sergeant on every shift who is responsible for the Duval area. Those team sergeants have keys and have access to that building, whether they work days or nights. And the expectation is they go by the building, they can do reports inside. We have partnered with Parks and Recs and Cultural Affairs to gain access, to have a little office, um, and to have an increased presence. That increased presence has resulted in arrests, not only on the CRK Center for Illegal Activity, uh, drug arrests, uh, small domestic, some other things, but also over across the street, uh, next to the store and next to the vacant lot that's there. Um, so it has been a request through Parks and Recs that we have an increased presence there. Um, and we have been fulfilling that for some time now.
Absolutely. And requests from Parks and Rec, and I would add also a request from some community members. I do know that, uh, I personally had some constituents reach out and schedule a few meetings with me to ask for you all to be present. And so we're certainly grateful that you've been able to respond and that we are seeing some positive results in that regard. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. And I'll echo that. I mean, it, it is, it, driving down particularly violent crime in, in the city is, it, it requires many, many partners. But you all are the linchpin. It is still criminal activity, and criminal activity has to be addressed by law enforcement. And we, we have set up a system, I believe, over the last couple of years, where the, the totality of, of the city organization is involved in, in violent crime and driving down violent crime. But if you all are not, that, that, the leaders and then, and then the functional, um, where the rubber meets the road, it doesn't work. Um, you know, we're super, we're reporting again this morning from, uh, uh, from everything we do with, with GFR in that regard, and I'm very, very happy with Impact GNV. Um, but it, some of this has to be a law enforcement activity, and that is y'all. And, and you've, you've done a remarkable job with this. We, we have to continue to see these kind of things move forward, and that only happens with the community on board. And the community has absolutely been on board. The community came to us and said, we have to do something. And we, as an organization, have responded, but the community has also responded. And I, I don't want anybody to think that it is any one small group of people who made these changes. It is everybody. It's the whole kitchen sink. But without law enforcement being, you know, out front, it, it doesn't work. So, but thank you. And we do have a couple more lights up here. Commissioner Book.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it, Major. Can you go back to the January first to September thirtieth slide? It's the second or third slide. Um, you know, we are, which is basically everyone in this room and us up on the dais, are accountable when crime goes up and when people don't feel safe in their community. On the other hand, we're certainly also accountable, and we can take, um, a, a real lot of excitement on what we're seeing as it relates to this and the efforts of Gainesville Police and all the other partners that I think you were alluding to, uh, Mr. Mayor, whether it's the gun violence prevention, Impact GNV, what we're doing in, in fire, and even our Public Works and traffic and engineering. I mean, you, you look at it holistically, and, um, this, this is just incredible information. Do we share this with our other law enforcement partners so they can kind of take a look and see where their trends are versus ours on a monthly basis also?
Absolutely. So we attend the Gun Violence Alliance Meeting every month, and we go over our gun violence statistics and our violent crime with them, and they share theirs with ours. Um, the impacts GNV attends, the BOLD Program, the Interrupters, the, there are many organizations, maybe Moms, you know, Demand Action, and many civic organizations and members of the community, where we make sure we are at those meetings. And when I was talking about the seventy-nine community meetings we do attend, that is so we can listen to the community and address the issues that they have. Sometimes it's quality of life issues, but it's just putting us in the right place to hear what the community is asking us to do, and then partnering with those community organizations, resources in order to affect change and get, you know, and help solve problems. Even sometimes if they're not law enforcement problems, we're kind of the catch-all. We work twenty-four seven. And, um, I am so proud of the men and women at the Gainesville Police Department, because they are, in essence, have the ability to call on those resources and know all the resources available in our community to be able to solve those problems and put the citizens in contact with the right individuals, um, even when we can't. And so, uh, these numbers are, are all of us working together, but it is for every patrol officer that is out there every day answering calls for service. It's for every detective. It's for every person. So thank you for the, the nice compliments, but I would like to give them to the ones that are doing the hard work every day. I get the pleasure of talking in front of a microphone. They're the ones who are connecting, right?
Well, we're also talking in front of microphones. We do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would just say that for, for example, at the University of Florida, you know, there's a, a passionate group that's, that talk about their perceptions for their, um, for their students that are at the University of Florida, but statistics, um, statistics are hard to argue with. And so it's really important that things like this are shared, so that they can share it and say, you know, uh, perception is very important of safety, but also, uh, inaccurate understanding of exactly what, what our safety metrics are is even more important. My last comment is, I was just thinking back in twenty-twenty-three, um, towards the beginning, Commissioner Duncan Walker and you, Mr. Mayor, recognized two trends that were just totally unacceptable. And they were, and one was traffic violence and one was gun violence. And we've been working for now two years plus, so I appreciate you all recognizing that. And these are comprehensive efforts, but they're making long-term trends. We may be up a month to a month, or one quarter to another quarter, but this is four years of data that we're basically looking at. I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to that. So I really appreciate you two identifying that, but also where we're heading.
Yes, sir. To us, one fatality is too many. One victim is too many. And we will not stop relentlessly to, to help those victims and try to prevent whatever we can in order to prevent the loss of life.
All right, well, thank you.
That is our man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to, I wanted to jump in on this, on this GPD loving. Um, uh, because from, from my perspective, you know, I, I'm, you know, I've been in the city for, um, for about thirteen, fourteen years, and have worked with GPD over the, over the time in, in, um, in various capacities. But I think until I stepped into this role and I, um, I read the, uh, day and night shift reports every day, I'd never had a, I think, a full picture of all of the work and all of the, uh, engagement that goes into, uh, any given shift. And I think I've, I've been just, you know, incredibly impressed about just the amount of coverage, the, the detail, the care that goes into, um, into every shift, um, that you, that I. G, that, uh, GPD does. And in terms of just the overall span of, of the, um, whether it's, uh, walking downtown and talking to businesses, whether it's, um, uh, um, patrolling, um, the, uh, around CRK, whether it's, you know, just responding to calls for service, um, it's been eye-opening for me in this role to be able to see that, um, all of those statistics sort of boil down to the day in, day out work that GPD does. And so, um, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to let this opportunity to, to go just to share that it's been, um, it's been a great experience for me being able to really kind of, um, see a little bit behind the curtain about everything that goes in, uh, day in and day out.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, so do we have any public comment, by the way?
Public comment.
Okay. Um, before we go, I, I'll thank you all once again for, for everything. And, and when I thank you all, I'm thanking everyone, uh, involved in GPD and everyone including families and, and loved ones of, of all our officers who are, are out there, uh, doing the, the, the everyday work. It's, it's much appreciated. I will tell you though, that, that a thing that I'm, that, that catches my eye as, as, as I continue to look through these, um, the statistics and the stories behind the statistics and the people behind them, um, a, a thing that leaps out at me is this year we have three homicides, um, and two of them were domestic violence. And so over the next year or so, I really want to, to delve into, and I haven't had a conversation yet with the manager about this or anyone else, but so I'm just bringing this on everybody, but I, I am very interested in what we can do to, to help those numbers go down. Uh, domestic violence in general, if we have, um, if we see two domestic violence murders, we know there are many, many, many other injuries and harms and crimes that, that go unreported and, and that lead to that. So that is, it is an area that you will hear me talk more about and that I want to work with everybody we can to, to help reduce, uh, domestic violence in our community, um, as well as suicides. Um, we, we don't talk much at all about suicide. It's a problem worldwide, certainly a problem in our community and it's a different problem than most people suspect it to be and that is popularly thought of in, in, uh, in, in everyday understanding. And we can all, as an organization, we can have a part to play in reducing suicides in this community. And, uh, this is as good a place to start talking about that as, uh, as, as any other report. So those are a couple of things you're going to hear me talk more about over, over the next year. Just, um, I can't thank you all enough for, for the work that, that you've done and, uh, please let everyone know how, how pleased I think the City Commission is with, uh, with the results that we're getting.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Yes. Mayor Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to 2025 eight two five, accept the 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Uh, with the recommendation, the City Commission accept the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Report, approve the submittal of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by December 31st, 2025, and authorize the City Manager or Designee to execute all necessary documents required for the submittal of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Report, subject to approval by the City Attorney as to form and legality.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ward, Commissioners. I'm John Wachtel, the Neighborhood Planning Coordinator in Department of Housing and Community Development. And, um, before I jump right into the, uh, incentives report, I just want to, um, introduce you to some, uh, some new talent that we brought into Housing and Community Development that we're excited about. First we have Marie Messidou, who is our Housing Compliance, uh, Housing Advocate and Compliance Specialist. She's also going to be, uh, taking on the, um, Board Liaison, the Staff Liaison to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And we've got Feneta Lewis, who we, we, uh, take it on from Department of Sustainable Development. She's our new, uh, Housing Manager. So we're excited to have them join us.
Should we give us different kinds of reports now?
Typically when we talk about the, um, Incentives and Recommendations Report, you know, this is a report that comes from the, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. It's not a, a staff report. And typically we have a, a member of the committee actually present it to you, but, um, you know, everybody just has jobs and sometimes, uh, emergencies come up. So, uh, the member couldn't make it, so I'll, I'll give it to you real quick. Um, so the Incentives and Recommendations Report is, and in the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, this is all about the SHIP program, the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program. Basically, we have to adopt the, um, Incentives and Recommendations Report, the IRR, in order to really participate and, and get funding through the SHIP program. And just real briefly, the IRR is basically a review of local regulations and incentives and policies and plans and the like that impact the cost of housing. Um, it has to be developed by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and it's their recommendations to the City Commission. Um, just real quick for a little background, but, um, the, the SHIP program, like I said, it's the state housing initiative partnership program. It's a creation of the state, creation of the legislature. It's in the Florida statutes. It's both a program and a funding source. The funding comes from the documentary, uh, StAP, the Documentary Stamp Tax on Real Estate Transactions. So in general terms, collections go up as housing prices increase or housing sales increase. Um, so any of these programs that involves money coming from the state, um, they don't just give it to us. They, they want some, us to do some things for them too. We have to do an annual report, which we do every year, which kind of talks about what we've done with the money. We have to do a local housing assistance plan, which we do every three years. Um, that includes what we plan to do over the three-year period, what types of programs, uh, we're going to have, uh, what our funding is. Um, the next one is due, this is a mistake, I apologize, it's due, uh, May 1st, 2026. So that's, that's coming up and, uh, the end of the three-year cycle will be coming after the new year and, um, you'll be hearing about that. You also have to have an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Um, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has to do the incentives report. They have to do it every year, um, and they have to present it to y'all. So just real quick, you know, what do we do? What is our program? What do we do with this, uh, the funding? Well, we do a lot of things, but, um, some of the main things we do is homeowner repair, you know, maintain the existing housing stock, um, and preserve and stabilize, uh, neighborhoods. We help with down payment assistance, which helps people move from renting into homeownership, uh, build wealth in our community. We do for, uh, mortgage foreclosure intervention, do a lot of counseling, uh, for homeowners and home buyers to, to maintain housing. You know, that's, that's a, a big project. We started to do some, um, um, support of the development of new affordable housing. We're just now, um, starting to do more of that. So the incentives report, just a couple of details about the incentives report. Basically, the legislation says that AHAQ has to look at 11 incentives or strategies or, um, whatever you want to call it, regulations that impact the, the cost of housing, the provision of affordable housing. These are caught out in the statute. What we always tell AHAQ to do is look at these, it, they, they focus on the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan mostly, but it's all kinds of policies and procedure. But think, you know, does this, do, do these, um, city regulations unnecessarily increase the cost of housing? And, um, does the city provide these incentives, uh, for affordable housing? So AHAQ can recommend, um, other strategies besides the, the ones that are caught out by the state. Um, but, and, and the city is not required to implement all the strategies, uh, except for the first two. Um, w- we have to expedite, uh, the processing of permits and, and plans, uh, for affordable housing compared to, um, market rate housing and, and we do that. And we have to review any new regulations that could impact, um, the cost of housing. And you can see that in the reports you get that we always, um, provide you with that information. So rather than going over all of the recommendations in the report, we thought we'll just hit on some of the main themes or, or main points of, of the report. Um, so just know that AHAQ has looked at these issues and the topics and they've talked about them all year and they're familiar with these, um, recommendations and with the Incentives and Recommendations Report. They've reached a, uh, a high level of consensus on what they want to include in this report. Um, so one of the big things they talk about, and we've heard this, um, a, a lot, is increased engagement in the community. Continue to engage the community, meet people where they are and continue to include AHAQ. They, they definitely wanted to emphasize that they want to be, um, in, involved and, um, you know, have a chance to comment and, and keep abreast of any new developments or new regulations. Um, they think it's important to educate the community about the development process. You know, especially zoning and land development regulations, that trips up a lot of people, but there is a process to it and it'd be, it's, it's helpful, they feel, of, um, as we continue to recommend that, um, that the community be involved in that. I know that's called out in the, the comprehensive plan that you were talking about earlier. There's some policies about that. Um, they think it's important, they like some of the, um, recent changes that, uh, y'all have implemented. Um, they think it's important to continue to study and monitor those changes such as inclusionary zoning, the single-family, uh, zoning and lot size reform and the, um, accessory dwelling unit changes. So they, they just think, keep an open mind, keep studying that and revise it as it comes up. A lot of that is relatively new. And, um, continue to increase and to focus on preserving the unique qualities of neighborhoods. Look, look at the neighborhoods, look at the ones that are threatened or rapidly changing, um, and continue to study and implement and really look at anti-gentrification and anti-displacement measures, right? That's always a, a, a big emphasis of the, the committee. All right. So with that, I'll, I'll give you the recommendation, uh, our recommendations that you accept the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Report, approve the submittal of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025, uh, Incentives and Recommendations Report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by December 31st, 2025, and authorize the City Manager or Designee to execute all necessary documents required, uh, for the submittal of the AHAQ's 2025 Incentives and Recommendations Report, subject to approval of the City Attorney as to form and legality. So with that, I appreciate your patience. Uh, we'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wachtel. Um, and I would, uh, point out that, um, our AHAQ is, is very active. The, the, the committee is, is very, very interested and that is, that has not always been the case here and I don't think it's, uh, the case in most cities, but ours is, is very committed to, to engaging the community, uh, in a way most of our advisory boards, uh, all our advisory boards were caught. AHAQ is out there, man. I mean, they, they are really, really proud to, to be, uh, representing the City of Gainesville and listening to the people in our community. So I want to give them a, a shout out, um, because I know they're all watching online right now. So, uh, any questions at this point? Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you, Mr. Wachtel. I, with, I know that, um, on the recommendations for, uh, impact fees, we do not have straight-up impact fees, um, and that's why it doesn't really apply there, but I, I asked AHAQ me and I wanted to just make sure I fully understand again. Um, with the, with mobility plan and particularly, uh, mobility fee, where would the recommend, what, where would a recommendation from AHAQ interact with that to say, we recommend, um, not having it apply to affordable housing or a reduced amount or even affordable housing in a certain area, you know, west of, west of Maine or west of 13th. So I just want to make sure I understand where that part is that, is it can it not be in this IRR or is that just something that the Commission needs to talk about separately?
Um, oh, excuse me. There's, there's, there's a specific, um, there's one, one of the ones, let me move forward. Okay. So in, this is, this slide is, is very general, that it's not applicable like, like you were saying. But when you actually look at the report, it, it says that, uh, whenever possible, the, the City Commission should try to find a way to exempt either, do one of two things, either exempt, um, affordable housing from these fees or to pay for them from another source. And I think it calls out transportation, um, the transportation mobility fee in, in particular, but as far as paying for them from another source, um, the example is the connect free program, which, um, where, where money is connected, is collected, uh, as a SRTAX on new connections in certain parts of their, um, their service area outside the city limits. And that money, we've, uh, basically been using a big chunk of that to, um, support the connections for affordable housing, uh, both single-family houses and, um, like new affordable housing, uh, as single-family houses and as, um, like a match for larger, uh, affordable apartment complexes.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure, because yes, it is, thank you for making sure it's in the actual report. I pulled up that document where it does say, um, recommends exempt, um, uh, from development fees such as, and it says the potential mobility fee. I just want to make sure the Commission hears that, that is in here so that as we get through mobility fee, because that may be in, in the next year, that we, we remember that that recommendation at least has come from AHAQ and then, so that we remember it and, and particularly I want staff to hear that I remember because it is in here. It's kind of deeper in, but I just, I'm, I'm just, I've been harping on this with both AHAQ and the Commission because I, I don't want to, I don't want it to surprise us when we get down there and go, oh, we should have not done this or whatever. I want to make sure it's on everybody's mind as we develop, um, uh, the potential mobility fee, um, the more, the more universal mobility fee, um, so that we're prepared and we can have those conversations and, um, and, and when that happens again, if we need to have AHAQ, you know, kind of talk some stuff out, I'll, I'll, I'll be welcome to, if I'm on it or someone else is on it. So I just wanted to bring that up, but thank you so much. And, and Mr. Wachtel didn't mention that this may be the last time he's going to be here with us?
Yeah, this is the last time I get to address you as, as your staff.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say congratulations on a, on a long career and thank you for all of your service.
Yes, thank you for your service.
Yeah, thanks. I've enjoyed it.
How many years have you been with us, Mr. Wachtel?
Um, almost 24.
Wow.
Right at the edge there.
All right.
Yeah, no, it's, um, it's, it's been a, a pleasure to, to work with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wachtel, don't sit down just yet. Don't take your bow just yet. First of all, sir, thank you so much for your service. Uh, I truly enjoyed the presentations and the information that you've come to share with us over the years, your temperament, your understanding and a seeming passion that you have for the work that you do. So thank you very much, um, and all the best to you in, uh, your future endeavors. I'd like to ask this. You mentioned at the end of your statements that, uh, there is work around gentrification or anti-gentrification that is coming out of AHAQ. Can you speak to us a little more in detail? Is there a plan that is being put in place, a method to implement said plan? What, what kind of anti-gentrification work is being taken up?
Well, I don't know that a lot of it is coming out of AHAQ. I know that they were very interested and very concerned about, um, a, a, about what's going on in the community and how, um, there, there is displacement or gentrification. And, you know, that is a big topic. It's, it's complicated and I, I just think they'd like to see, um, some additional study done on that, maybe to, just keeping track of, just keeping track of, um, developments that are going in and, and where they're going and what was there before. Um, I, this, this is all more work that's, you're saying somebody else is going to have to do, but it, they feel like keeping track of that would be important. They also, um, they also note that in the past, we have done some things, right? There was the, uh, the My Neighborhood, um, program that, um, that, that we did work with Ayers Properties, you know, go back and look at a lot of that, um, and, and sees what, what of that do we want to, uh, bring back, what was successful? Uh, they asked a lot of questions, but there was a lot of concern. Um, there was a lot of suggestions, just real quick, that, um, since so many of them have like a legal basis or working with a nonprofit, um, a legal basis or working with a nonprofit legal team, like Three Rivers and the Light, that maybe some of those programs could be combined. That was suggested also, if you remember right.
Thank you very much. I do know that there's been a lot of conversation. We've heard from our neighbors who've come to some meetings, asking us to take a look back at that. Mr. Mayor, you and I had a conversation probably about two or three years ago about the program that you moved forward and implemented, the My Neighborhood program, which I thought was a great program. I really was sorry that we did choose to sunset that, but I certainly would be interested in hearing A-hack's recommendations about bringing it back however we can, because there are real impacts to how neighborhoods are changed and what displacement actually does. So, thank you very much. I do believe you've answered my questions for this, for this time, and congratulations to you, Mr. Rocktell. All the best to you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan Walker. Mr. Manager.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would not let this opportunity pass to personally thank John. In the misty, misty mists of history, I actually started at the city as a young planning intern, going to, going through grad school, and I actually interned with John when he was actually in the planning department as a, as a, working as a neighborhood planner and got my feet wet a little bit in the planning world, working with neighborhoods, going to, going around and following John and working on several of the early neighborhood plans that the city was doing at the time. So, John's been a great resource, both to the city as well as to me personally and a friend, and so I'll definitely miss him as he's gone.
Very good. Thank you for weighing in there. Commissioner Engel.
I guess we're all doing this. Also want to say congratulations in what must have been, I don't know, better than a decade ago now. I think the first committee I ever sat on was the, the first real interactions I had with the city was being on A-hack committee, dealing with a young rabble-rouser back in the day. And I think the first staff I really worked around was John. So, congratulations on a good career, and I'll enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is no public comment.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Willis.
I move the city commission accept the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee's 2025 IRR, that we approve the submittal of A-hacks 2025 IRR to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation by December 31st, 2025, and that we authorize the city manager or designate to execute all necessary documents required for the submittal of A-hacks 2025 IRR.
Second.
We have motioned multiple seconds. I see no further lights. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that passes unanimously. Excellent work, and thank you once again, Mr. Rocktell. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, next is the 2025-924 Resolution Receiving Report of Board of Canvassers, Charter Amendment Special Election 2025, with the recommendation that this resolution, 2025-924, of the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida, receiving the certificate of result and report of Board of Canvassers for the City of Gainesville, Florida, special election held November 4th, 2025, incorporating the certificate into the minutes of the November 20th, 2025 regular meeting of the City Commission and providing an immediate effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Of course, this is a ministerial function at this point. All the heavy lifting has been actually done by the, by the Board of Canvassers itself and by the people who showed up and voted. So, that is much appreciated. Madam Clerk, do you have something to add to that?
Yes, I just wanted to give comment about how incredible the experience was on the canvassing board. I think a lot of folks don't realize the incredible detail that goes into ensuring a safe and fair election. I want to give extreme thanks to Supervisor of Elections, Kim Barton, and her staff. Incredibly knowledgeable, helped walk us through that process. Also, our city attorney, Dan Nie, and his staff were there with us every step of the way, guiding us as to standards. And of course, our incredible Chair, Stephen Mehdi, and the, our other member, Russell Etling. I just cannot say enough about the experience. It was great.
Very good, very good. Mr. Brayden, you want to give us some thoughts?
Yes, thank you very much. I do, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, city builders. As you know, for this special election, all of you city commissioners declared some conflict of interest, and therefore you could not serve on the Board of Canvassers in accordance with the city charter. Because of the city charter, I was therefore designated to serve as Chair of this board, and I served alongside the city clerk, Ms. Bryant, and Citizen at Large, Mr. Russell Etling. I'm pleased to report that the board conducted this work in full compliance with Florida election law, the city charter, and all required procedures. We met publicly, we reviewed returns publicly, we examined provisional ballots publicly, and ensured that every eligible vote was properly counted. This democratic process to capture the will of the people was conducted in a transparent, orderly, and professional manner. I'm very proud to have been a part of that. On behalf of the Board of Canvassers, I would like to extend as well my appreciation to the city attorney for being there to give us professional advice, as well as Assistant City Attorney Catherine for doing the same. I would also like to say my gratitude to the Supervisor of Elections and his staff for their expertise and advice during this process. But most of all, I would like to express my gratitude to election workers who went tirelessly and helped make an important, tedious, and elaborate process appear routine and flawless. To them, I say thank you very much. Those are my remarks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, thank you for being willing to be a part of the process as well. I knew you would enjoy it.
I'd like to do it again, if possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a chance to speak with the other canvasser, Mr. Etling, kind of in the, somewhere in the middle, just a few days before the actual election. So, they'd already been some of the, looking at all the steps, and he said the same thing. He loved it. He said it was so well organized. He had nothing but kudos for the supervisor's election staff. He was very glad to have served. He, you know, he learned a lot, but he also really, he really took it to heart, the vital role it plays. He's very appreciative that we appointed him to Board of Canvassers, and he also said he would be willing to do it again for future elections for, you know, for the supervisor, for, you know, the normal, you know, election cycle. So, it sounded, it sounds like they all really enjoyed it, but I also just want to express my gratitude to the auditor, the clerk, and to Mr. Etling for doing that, because it's a vital, it is a vital role in our democracy, so. And with that, I move adoption of Resolution 2025-924.
Second.
We have motioned in a second. And then before we get to a vote, Madam Clerk, we don't have a bill yet from the supervisor, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, alright, thank you. Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, I did just want to jump in and thank, I was surprised, and not to get too far into any of the substance of the election or anything like that, but just the sheer number of people that came out to vote. I mean, when I was guessing as to what I was factoring what could be happening here, I figured, okay, well, you know, 73% of voters voted for this back, but you know, that, we can't possibly have that many people vote for it this time around. I mean, there must be some aversion back to the, to a regular amount. When 75% of people voted yes, then you had, I think it was 19% turnout, which is the largest turnout that we've had in over 15 years. That came because the community stood up to this, and I think there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, the city commission. I know I get a lot of questions like, why about us bringing this forward or us voting to put this on the ballot? And I do think that it really speaks to the point that this many people cared about it, this many people voted yes on it, of why we decided to have a special election on this, because we answer to the customers of GRU, we answer to the people. And I know everywhere that I go, I hear people tell me that this is an issue that matters to them, they are fired up about it, and they've wanted this to continue to move forward. And I think it, it speaks to why we put it on the ballot, why it was important to have on there, not because we in any particular way are incredibly passionate about it, any more than that this community is incredibly passionate about it. And I think these election results that were overwhelming, they were bipartisan, they were clear, really speaks to that point. And so, I'm glad that we have this behind us, then we can move on, move on to the next thing in the discussion of the back and forth of the governance of our local public utilities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Eastman. And I will say, I want to make sure everybody understands, when we talk about this being the largest turnout in 15 years for a standalone city election, and we have lots of data about standalone city elections, because until very recently, that's how we elected our city commissioners, was a March election every year. So, we have lots of data on that. And it was, the reason we moved elections, primary reason, was because we were getting, you know, somewhere between 10 and 14% turnout on a consistent basis. 19% is out of the park. I mean, for a standalone city election with one item on the ballot, that is an enormous turnout, and I'm real proud of our community, no matter how you voted, for the folks who made the effort to take part and to take their responsibility as voters seriously and cast their ballot. So, thanks, everybody, for that. Did I already ask for public comment?
No public comment.
Very good, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Willis.
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman.
Aye.
Commissioner Engel.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Book.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Alright, Madam Clerk.
Commission comment.
Right, I'm guessing there will be some other commission comment. I have multiple things, so I'll save mine if anybody else has anything to roll out first. Nope, okay. First, we'll get the hard part out of the way first, and it's not all that difficult, but it is something that I want to draw to everyone's attention. Yesterday afternoon, I believe it was yesterday, the last couple of days, we had a report from the city manager's office that was emailed to, to all the members of the commission about our finances with, as they relate to GRU, all the back and forth transactions over the course of the 2025 fiscal year, which recently ended. Most of that, as anyone who is directly involved in all of this could predict, moves without, without much fear, without, you know, too much to really question. And while we may, you know, have disagreements about, about cost allocation studies and service level agreements and that sort of thing, there are agreements and the money flows as, as agreed. A place that I find difficult, and I would be remiss, I think, if we didn't talk about it, is in two places. Now, the, the transfer, the general services contribution agreed upon by the authority to the city, to general government, has been $8.5 million. We received about $7.1 million. And there are two large pieces that are the reason we didn't receive the full 8.5. One of those is the 30-plus-year contract that exists between the City of Gainesville, general government, the utilities, and Alachua County for streetlights in the county. That is $1,133,000 a year now, about. There's some, that fluctuates. But it was $1.13 million in last year. When that contract was made, and everybody signed off on it 30-plus years ago, made sense. There are lots of good reasons for it. Now, City of Gainesville taxpayers are paying for traffic lights in unincorporated Alachua County. I understand how that is a benefit to the utility. I understand how that is a benefit to Alachua County. I do not understand how that is a benefit to City of Gainesville taxpayers. We've talked about this before. It is a contract, though. It is something we need to figure out how to revisit and work with the other, the other two signatories, because it doesn't make sense. And at some point, that figure that goes up every year, it's not, it's never going to get smaller, $1.13 million that the taxpayers of our city are paying to keep traffic light or to keep, rather, the streetlights on in the unincorporated county, I don't know why we're doing that. And we're going to need good answers to that at some point. Again, that is a contract. That exists, I understand that it needs to exist, and I understand how we get stuck paying the bill. It just needs to get fixed. The other piece, last year, we ended up paying $313,398 for legal fees incurred by GRU against City of Gainesville General Government for lawsuits brought by the GRU authority against the City of Gainesville General Government. Because of the way the transfer flows, the general services contribution goes, it is money that is transferred from the GRU authority, from the utilities, to general government. And it feels like, and I do not mean for this to sound offensive, but it's going to, it feels like a slush fund, because the GRU authority has sued the city twice and multiple motions within that, lots of legal action within that. We didn't sue them. They sued us, and without a court telling them, or telling us that we had to pay their legal fees, they just decided we were going to pay their legal fees. And last year, last fiscal year, that amounted to $313,398. That is not chump change. If we were paying legal fees, normally, they go through the city attorney's office, and someone in his office goes through and says, "This makes sense, this doesn't, we need to question this," et cetera, et cetera. That's not how this worked. They just said, "You're going to pay our legal fees for us suing you." Where in the world does that happen besides this? I've never seen that. Now, sometimes a court will order a losing party to have to pay. A, we're not a losing party, and B, we haven't been ordered to do this. They just decided we were going to pay their legal fees. And I think it's important to talk about this. I said it a few times in the lead-up to the, to the election, because I find it egregious. And now that we have the actual financial report on this, I think it's important to talk about it. It doesn't make sense. It is not normal in any kind of business procedure that I'm familiar with. And I want folks to understand, this is part of the reason that it's important to listen to the people and bring this back into the kind of relationship that makes sense. Because right now, stuff like this happens, and I don't know how it's defensible and how it makes sense. It's really all I have to say about it, but I see some other lights here. And when we finish this talk, I do have a couple of other things that you'll like much better, that are, you know, a much better tone, but I felt like when we got this report, we had to have a discussion about this. Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure we understood that. So, this is something that the finance committee has been getting every quarter, or I think quarter, basically. Is that right, Mr. Winn? I think every quarter. And so, we, because I think I asked for it in the, maybe last year, because it was of interest. So, we see it, and we haven't forwarded it every time, but because it was the end of the year, end of the fiscal year, and this is un-audited, but it's the end of the fiscal year, that's why we, I mean, Commissioner Book, we voted to send it, have staff send it to you, just so you see it, and in case you wanted it via kind of a conversation or a reminder that the information beyond the public. We've appreciated it, and we go through a little more in detail with Mr. Winn in those meetings, but partially it's that reminder. Some of it's, you know, fully expected, some of it, we're reminded, oh, you know, solid waste is a little more than last year, but we raised a rate, you know, so more than budgeted, you know. So, but we just thought it was, would be appropriate to have in your hands, and it does spark conversation. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I'm glad you brought this up. I saw that, and I do find it very concerning. So, one of our key roles and responsibilities up here is to ensure the taxpayer money is being protected, that we are not being defrauded. We have an, we have an auditor's office that continues to go through numbers, to make sure that we are rooting out waste, fraud, and abuse. We invest in that, and so to just receive $300,000 sight unseen and here, pay it, I guess I- $300,000 sight unseen, and here, pay it. I guess I had a question for, so, because this has been ongoing. One, there was a vote that was made back in, I think, the beginning of FY25 that included about this amount of money, that was for incremental LC for various other legal fees. Is this on, did we get a bill for this in FY24 as well, I guess is my first question? And is this FY25? Like, how does this add up to some of those earlier conversations?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Dent Swin, Director of Financial Services. And yes, we received their legal fees in fiscal year 24 as well. That amounted to a little over $400,000 last year. It does include invoices from fiscal year 2023 as well. So they caught up, they caught up their legal fees in fiscal year 2024, and then currently, we've been paying the legal fees month, every month with GFC deductions.
So if I'm getting this right, that's $400,000 plus 332, so we're talking about three-quarters of a million dollars, roughly?
Yes.
Okay. So we have paid three-quarters of a million dollars. I'm sorry, now, that's a whole, we paid three-quarters of a million dollars to GRU. And have we gotten, so have we gotten invoices from them? Have we gotten, you know, what it is exactly that we are paying for?
We did get invoices last year in fiscal year 2024, but since then, we have not.
And this is ostensibly, they say, about the lawsuits, correct?
Correct. That's what it's being claimed as, yes.
And we haven't received anything since then, since the FY24 one?
No.
Okay. Because I do happen to have the FY24 one that is claimed to be ostensibly about lawsuits. And much of this has nothing to do with lawsuits. There's, I see, February 21st, they're charging us for Folds and Walker to attend a GRU authority meeting months before we put this on the ballot. If you guys remember when we had a joint meeting between the GRU authority and the city, Folds and Walker, I probably shouldn't mention names, but I heard he did, their legal team charged for all their team members to sit here in this room and listen to it, over $3,000, $2,000, $3,000, somewhere in there. These are, I, this has nothing to do with, I think it is incredibly inappropriate to charge three-quarters of a million dollars for your decision as a board to sue the people, the taxpayers of the City of Gainesville to not have their voices heard. But I also am concerned about just simply, this is, I don't want to use hyperbolic language, but mean fraudulent, like this is, these have nothing to do with what the original motion was about. And so I do think, my concern is, one, the unfairness of it, which the law was written in such a poor and broad way, that potentially, they have the legal authority to send us ridiculous charges and charge us three-quarters of a million dollars. But I do think that at minimum, our taxpayers are owed transparency as to what we, as taxpayers, are paying to the GRU authority and to what reason. Because when I look at the last ones, the transparency shows me that they're just throwing spaghetti at the wall and saying, pay for this, pay for that, pay for, it looks to me like a lobbying firm to lobby on behalf of them, though I can't say for sure, because there's no transparency. And I, I think that this is something that we need to be talking about and looking more into. Three-quarters of a million dollars is not something that we can simply say, sorry, taxpayers, we don't know where this is coming from. We need to at least, I think, begin by asking the questions and then figuring out what to do after that fact. Because I do think that this is a core responsibility of ours, to protect our taxpayers from erroneous and expenditures like this. So thank you for that. I guess I would like to have a motion at some point about, at least, starting that conversation with the GRU authority about, at minimum, transparency related to these charges. And hopefully, they would honor that, because that is, I mean, a critical part of government. But I'll hear from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Chestnut?
So I guess the first question is, who authorized the payment?
Well, I want to connect, because I, it is, it's not a payment. They just withhold the money. So it's this weird situation where it's like-
So they just deduct it?
They just deduct it. So it's this weird situation where it's hard to say, it's hard to say, like, oh, well, we're not going to pay it. Well, they just withhold it. So every step of the way. But to Commissioner Eastman's point, I do agree that if we, for 2025, it would be really great to see the invoices for the whole year, if they have not been sending it, you know, they haven't been sending it. 2024, we saw some. So anyways, so thank you, Mayor Perk and Mr. Eastman, for bringing that up. But yeah, that's the issue. It's not, it's not a bill that, yeah.
All right, all right. So we have a service level agreement with them for data?
IT.
IT. And we pay GRU for IT.
We do, except that that also comes out of, I mean, we're, they, this happens, all of it, because they can just deduct.
Well, no. My point is, if we are paying them for the data, let's deduct this money from there. Why don't we deduct the $300,000, when they send us the bill, deduct the $300,000 from that bill?
So, I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, no. I'd like an answer on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Attorney, what are your thoughts on process, how such a thing might work?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that that is not, would not be my recommendation.
Why not?
Well, because we provide, or we receive a service in terms of GRU IT that, of course, right now, the city is very dependent on. And so crossing the streams in that way would be potentially problematic. And I hear where the commission is, you know, concerns, and I share the same concerns. And as was correctly stated, these are not bills that we're paying. It's simply less money that the utility is providing in terms of the general service transfer. And the city essentially doesn't really have, or doesn't have a whole lot of recourse for that. And we can certainly write a letter to the board, or the commission can write a letter to the board, you know, we can sort of work on our side for, you know, greater transparency. But at the end of the day, if they're not going to provide it, they're not going to provide it. That level of kind of what you all want to see in terms of, you know, sort of detailed invoices for that.
So I think, I think that I, a thing that I heard from you without you actually, you know, enunciating it, was if we don't pay them, they might not provide the service, and we got to have the service.
I got you. So maybe at this point, we need to start providing a letter to them that you owe us for your attorney fees. You're deducting it, but we don't agree with that deduction. But I think somewhere, we have to voice the concern. If we haven't voiced the concern, they think that we enjoy paying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Engel?
I mean, I think everybody's frustrated with the entire situation, because we're getting robbed. Like, the people of the City of Gainesville are being robbed. They just are. And the way this is set up, there is zero accountability for that. Like, hey, heck, with this one, at least we got some idea that they were reducing it because of legal fees. But if they decide just to reduce it by a million dollars, they'll just reduce it by a million dollars. They don't have to justify it. They don't have to ask anybody. They don't have to come up with anything. They don't have to face the taxpayers, or the taxpayers, or the citizens of Gainesville. They can do whatever it is they like. They're appointed by the governor. They have no local accountability at all. It's one of the reasons it's such a terrible situation, and it's, I think, one of the reasons the people of the City of Gainesville came out in such very clear opposition to it. You know, it's a shame, this is the situation we're in. I don't think they care about a letter. I don't think we'll accomplish anything with having a joint meeting and explaining to them why it's morally wrong to do what they're doing. I think that they hold the cards, and if they decide that they want to hold back another million dollars, they'll hold back another million dollars. Like, I look at the, whatever it was, six and a half million dollars a year, whatever, that it's decided that we, you know, got overdrafted by the City of Gainesville to begin with, so they just decided to take it out of the general transfer. The lack of accountability of this is one of the many reasons this was such flawed legislation, so poorly thought out, and it's just this clown show of how to run a utility. It is, it's terrible, and I'm sad that we're stuck in this situation, but here's where we're stuck. Hopefully, until the appeals court gets around to hearing our case and seeing if we can't get rid of this entirely. My understanding is they won't allow the city auditor onsite. Like, there's no accountability outside of whatever whim hits them that day. And that's why it's a terrible situation. That's what I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. I'm sorry that you didn't have stronger opinions about me.
Clarification, or else I don't know.
Commissioner Willis?
Mr. Mayor, so a potential motion might be, I still think a letter just saying, we would like the 2025 invoices, but on top of that, a request to them that they audit those invoices, every invoice they send us, that they audit and confirm that it is valid about a lawsuit, not about merely anything they chose to do with legal representation. You know, in essence, ask them to audit it. If it was on, and I want to make sure that city staff understands, if this was something that it was a bill that we had, like, the option of paying, city staff would have 100% found potential discrepancies or disagreements, would have worked with whatever vendor had provided services or whatnot, would have pushed back, would have probably gotten to a resolution, or made sure to bring it to the city manager, bring it to the city commission to say, we're at an impasse about something. I have full faith that if it was a situation where a bill was to be paid, that they would have said, no, this is not, this has nothing to do with a service supposedly provided or required by our action. So I, I don't know if that's the kind of motion, Mayor Perk and Mr. Eastman, that you were thinking about, like, to ask them to, you know, and I think they still have a position on their board. Maybe we should ask the governor to appoint someone with audit experience.
Two.
Two? Is it two? Maybe ask them to appoint someone with audit and, you know, I don't know, CPA kind of experience, someone who can impress upon them the importance of auditing all portions of their operation. I mean, that'd be a letter to the governor to say we really would appreciate some of that, more oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Eastman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I hear, God, it's so hard with the GRU authority. I feel like the, like, it's very nice to go, like, my first reaction to everything is to go tit-for-tat with various things. I mean, from what you said about just withholding money that's being paid, that is what they chose to do to us, right? And they are still doing that. They're paying a fraction of what they should be under what all of our staff has said is the cost of doing the services that are required of them. But I, going tit-for-tat on all of these things can be, I don't know, at some point, we have to decide that we are going to run our shop like a business and be more professional. I could ask our city manager to spend all this time on Facebook talking about things, but I am not choosing to do such a thing, because I think our, I believe in running government well, and I believe in focusing on the outcomes and being transparent and being efficient and not politicizing government to the extent that I am what I am seeing across the street. And so it means that sometimes you're unilaterally disarming, and I think that might be where we are right now. I do think that hopefully, the only thing they can bring this in is that the GRU authority has to decide to hold their staff accountable. At some point, they have to make that decision, that they don't want to look their neighbors in the face and decide that they want to continue to be against their votes, to be, have, you know, executives that are doing what they are doing, and that they want to be transparent, and that there has to be some level of accountability to those folks. And so I do think sending a letter, I'm trying to figure out how to put the auditing portion into that. The motion that I had was that I move the city commission, send a letter to the Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority, requesting full transparency for all legal and related expenses billed to the city for FY23, 24, and FY25, including automated invoices, travel charges, consulting fees, and meeting preparation costs. The letter should also request an explanation for why these expenses are being charged to Gainesville taxpayers, beyond the millions already taken, and the basis the authority believes that these costs should be passed to city taxpayers. Like, in this portion.
Great. Do you want me to write that?
What's that?
Do you want me to write that?
Commissioner, are you able to, yeah. If you do it quickly, I can get it up on the-
So another thing that, a potential way to think about an auditor function would be that they allow the city auditor to audit those records. I mean, rather than an auditor somewhere, our city auditor, who is the city auditor, and that's more to the city.
I maintain strongly that our charter allows the city auditor to go anywhere within the city that he wants to go. I'll point out that the Florida Power and Light Scheme in Jacksonville, in which there was an executive who was going to be taking kickbacks, was selling Jacksonville Electric to Florida Power and Light, was found only because the city council sent an auditor into that independent authority and reviewed that. Otherwise, that wouldn't have been found. And so I think it's critically important that our auditor have the ability to review that for simple accountability, because we've seen what happens when that does happen. I don't know if we need to pull, I would like to send something to the GRU authority, say, you guys should, you know, just be transparent, and then we can discuss some of these trickier issues about how our charter officers interact with them, which now goes through legal and a bunch of other things. But I agree with you. I think that, I think that we need to have the ability to audit, and I think any part of our city government should be open to auditing. I don't see why it wouldn't be.
So maybe we, well, maybe we hear from Commissioner Book, who's next here, and then I'll add my thoughts. Mr. Book?
Did you want to go with the chairman or that? No, no, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Really, my focus was on the streetlights, where I know that we're in. So I thought maybe we should probably finish up the discussion on the, on the legal fees being charged. I think that what you said was good. It sounds like, Commissioner Eastman, that you're, the spirit of saying, provide us the information, so we can, whether we agree or disagree with it, we at least understand that it seems to be fees that are appropriately charged, right, by the firm, or the organization, or the attorneys there, I think, is probably a good thing. And maybe I'll have a comment about the streetlights in just a minute. I thought, let's finish up that one.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm not sure that we need to involve the auditor staff at this point. Maybe the first thing is, we say, hey, what are we paying for? We need you to be specific about this, and please stop, would be the other piece that I would say, because no one has directed, no court has directed that we should be paying these fees. You're suing us. Please stop. But obviously, I'll write whatever letter you all direct me to write. So he's finishing up a motion here, so.
While he's doing that, let me just kick off in the interest of time on the streetlights. It has always struck me as odd that the city is paying for the county streetlights, because in the beginning of 2023 or thereabouts, we actually did sign a contract with the former CEO, Mr. Cunningham, and we asked at the time, the GRU leadership, is this an appropriate way that the utilities deal with streetlights, no matter where they're at, in a municipality or county? And the answer from the GRU side was, absolutely, that's what happens. So we actually complied with the contract at that time. I realize it's a different GRU leadership, but it was important that, they said that that was a standard best practice for the manager. And so I think that no matter what side you're on, as it relates to the governance, most people in the community in north central Florida would understand that it seems odd that one city is paying one utility for municipal services in the county. No matter what side you're on, that is odd to me. And, you know, it might be something, but I voiced that actually in the Finance Committee with Chair Willis, that that did strike me as kind of unusual, and that was at least one of the mechanisms for why the chair said that we would forward everybody, the kind of back and forth. I agree with the manager. We do not benefit from trying to say, you owe us $50 for this, but then they owe us $100 for this. We'll get nowhere with that. It would devolve into more time, probably, for both bodies in that case. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what does the motion actually say?
Broadcast. Broadcast, you should be able to shut it. This is a new system, I'm thinking, I'm hoping this works.
If you want to just read it in the meantime, or-
Sure. I'm seeing typing, so maybe it's not going to work. Okay. Oh, you see it on yours?
That's cool.
If everyone else was on eScribe, you would see it not on your screen.
All right. Hold on, let me redo it. Let's see.
So, for anyone watching at home wondering what in the world we're waiting for, we have in the past used a real workaround system to get motions that needed, that were complex and needed to be read by everyone up on a screen. We've, we have what we believe is a simpler, more direct path to that, through our eScribe system, that automatically populates. But it's the first time we've tried to use it this way. It is a dry run on this, and-
Yeah. I'm just going to read it. Motion, the motion is that the city commission send a letter to the- Motion, the motion is that the city commission send a letter to the Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority, requesting full transparency for all legal and related expenses billed to the city for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and 2025, including itemized invoices, travel charges, consulting fees, and meeting preparation costs. The letter should also request an explanation for why these expenses are being charged to Gainesville taxpayers beyond the millions already taken, and the reason the authority believes these costs should be passed to the city taxpayers, along with the review of whether these expenses are truly related to the original motion about defending HB 1645. I'll send it the old way so it gets posted, but it'll take a moment.
I, I would ask, Commissioner Eastman, that you add on to that a, a request that we stop paying their legal bills for suing us?
Yeah.
I mean, however you want to word that.
Along with the, yes, I, I mean, yes.
So that is very clear.
Yes.
You know, so that it's not net.
Along with the request that we pay our own bills, that we incur based on our votes, I don't, I mean, that, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, I'd say, send a letter to the Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority requesting full transparency for all legal bills, review of whether these expenses were truly related to the original motion about defending HB 1645, and include a request to, that the GRU authority incur its own expenses, and not charge that to the city.
Yeah, that, I, I would say that the, that legal fees no longer be, be transferred to the city as well.
I'd say no longer, legal fees no longer be deducted.
Yeah, that's fine.
No longer trans.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fine. I do think that it is, like, I guess I was trying to make a point here, that this is a motion they made. They made the decision, and they don't want to pay the bills for the decisions that they make. But I can be a little clear, instead of a little too cute by half, and say that, that, that we request that they no longer charge us for legal fees.
I think it has to be very clear.
Right.
Yes.
Not cutesy, just point on.
That's fine.
Right.
I got a question.
Yes, the motion, I second, amending the motion, I guess, in a two.
So another member that I would ask for is that the city commission direct the mayor to send a letter, so it's clear what, what's.
All right, city commission direct the mayor to send a letter.
Okay. Do we have, did you have that, Madam Clerk and Commissioner Buck, do you want to add to this part?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Mayor, you covered two of the three options, which was ask you to draft the letter and the potential to request that we, we don't pay. The wordsmithing in me is the third part, Commissioner Eastman, and we, normally, when I think about motions, we want them to be as factual and kind of devoid of passion as possible. And that's important, especially when you have two governmental bodies that are speaking. So the way I look at it, I'm just, these are just thoughts, and we would not be able to discuss this behind the scenes, but requesting full transparency, we're just requesting transparency. We've already said transparency is the same. When you add words like that, I know people read into all kinds of things, so it is transparency. And we've given them examples of transparency. If it were made, I would say you drop that term. The other thing in the second paragraph, the letter should also request an explanation for why these expenses are being charged to Gainesville taxpayers, that's a factual statement. The second, we add the rest of that line, beyond the millions already taken, and the reason the authority believes these costs should be passed to the city taxpayers, is more of an opinion within, within the motion, I understand, and so if it were made, I recommend that we consider taking that out. So we're not attempting to make, we're not attempting to make philosophical arguments in the motion, we're simply dealing with the motion. And, and then the last line says, whether these expenses are truly related. Well, the really, what we're saying is whether these expenses are related. And I know that these are minor aspects, but we want to minimize the, the conflict that we already have in the way that we provide documents. So those would just be my, my three thoughts. Those are wordsmithing thoughts, and I don't know what you would think about it, Commissioner Eastman, but that's just me.
So, whoa.
So I sent the update that you amended most.
So you're saying, Commissioner Buck, from, from, from the word beyond down to the next taxpayers?
Essentially, that's right.
Okay, and no truly?
You know, I, I'm not an English major, but when we throw in adjectives and, you know, explanation, where we try and overly emphasize something, where motions are simply, you know, factual statement is what we got, that would be certainly my preference, and take, take, take the.
I, I think that has merit.
And it still retains the exact qualities that we need, and is, with, this is what we're asking to do.
Commissioner Eastman, are you good?
I, I, I think, I think so. I mean, unless Commissioner Ingle has other thoughts on it, I don't mind being a little, like, I, I am honestly shocked that, I did not know until this exact moment that we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars here. And so I don't mind being a little editorializing here. The, but I am happy to drop it. Really, what it comes down to is the mayor's going to be writing the letter, and that's what will actually get sent over. But I am happy to, to make those changes if, if, if that makes everyone feel more comfortable.
I would feel more comfortable with that, so.
And as a second or yes, I, I agree.
Okay, so, delete beyond and the words down to the second instance of taxpayers, and then delete truly. And I would be comfortable with, with the motion otherwise. Commissioner Ingle.
I was just going to say, if, I felt like if we were dealing with another governmental body and negotiating in good faith, then I would entirely agree with Commissioner Buck. As it is, I think we are, this motion will be as much about advocacy for the people of Gainesville as it is about actually asking the GRU for authority for an actual cooperation. So myself would lean towards the way it was originally written, but it's not a big deal for me one way or the other.
All right. I, I will say, you know, that this is, this is a topic that, again, I talked about in the lead up to, to the, the election itself. It's been discussed by many, many people in the community, but the actual number I wasn't aware of for fiscal '25 until I read the city manager's report, and, and you all talked about it at the finance committee the other day. It really struck me as something we, we needed to have a conversation about on the dais. Now, conversations across the community have, have been had about this idea that we're paying their legal bills to sue us, to keep the community's voice from being heard. But I, I appreciate you all being willing to have this conversation, and I appreciate the, the motion. It's just kind of bizarre, so I'm glad that, that we're, I think, of a like mind. Is there any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
I have no one signed up.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duck and Walker absent.
That's some positive stuff now, I must say.
Well, okay, Commissioner Buck, did you want to talk about the?
Yeah, I, I think I actually kind of inserted in there, like, kind of in the middle, which is, it's just a very odd concept, and I think no matter where someone lives, they would probably agree in concept looking. Why is the city of Gainesville paying for Latch County streetlights to the utility in the area? That's, that, that concept in of itself, no matter where you fall in the thing, I think would strike everybody as odd, and how did that even come to be? And so that was, that was just my comment there, so I did feel like it was very valid for you to bring that up. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we, we had a brief discussion about that with, in a joint meeting probably a year ago with the county, and I recall lots of head nodding from, from, from folks at, at the county, but everybody at the utility and at the county wants to get paid. And I, I don't know what the, the way forward is on that, but there has to be a way forward, and we ought to all give that some, some thought as we, as we move forward. All right, moving on to better things, nicer things. I have, after our discussion last week about one-way pairs at Northwest 10th and 12th, and Southwest 10th and 12th, I take one of those and pass it down, I was kind of inspired to write on social media a list of all the things that the city of Gainesville is getting built in the next year, year and a half. And the more I wrote, the more pleased I was with the work that that's being done. And I talked to the city manager, texted with the city manager about what is, what is our actual list? What am I missing? And he advised me of a couple of the things that I had left out. And these are, yeah, it's just one page. These are major construction projects we have before us by the end of next calendar year, of calendar year 2026. It does not include the literally hundreds of homes that we are partnering to have built, does not include the, the really great rock climbing gym that is about to be in process on the former RTS site, does not include Lot 10, does not include any of our partner relationships that we have working. This is just what the city is building. And I thought it was, A, useful to all of us to have it in mind so that we know what's coming up, so if we have questions about the projects, we can ask, but also to distribute it, let folks know. It's, it's on my social media from, from last weekend, but, but we should let folks know that their city is responding to the needs that they have brought forward over the last several years. And all of this is, we know where, how it gets paid for. None of this is, we're going to do this stuff, we'll figure it out later. It's, it's all in a variety of different buckets, including wild spaces, public places, the street stations, the rock foundations, some GCRRA money, a little bit of general fund, but mostly it is, it is through, you know, we have some things that are partnerships with the federal government, that we know how it's getting paid for, it's on the precipice, it's going to be a really busy year, it's going to be really good when it's done, but it's going to be a lot of construction that people are going to ask a lot of questions about. So I felt like we, we should put all this on a page to, so that we can answer questions when, when people ask us, and so we can tell the story a little better. So that was, was one of my two things. The other thing that I thought about mentioning this, that our GFR update or our GPD update, because it includes both of them, as well as Public Works, but we were recently recognized, city of Gainesville is recognized as a winner once again of the Win Phillips Town Gown Award at the University of Florida for Town Gown Relationship, specifically on game day processes, and, and the way that we're able to administer UF game day and other events that are similar to that, like the basketball championship celebration, like the big concerts coming up next year at, at Florida Field. And, and they're, they list many, many entities that are a part of that. Certainly, at the, at city of Gainesville, it's at the very least GPD, GFR, and, and Public Works, and many, many other people throughout the organization, but also Florida Highway Patrol, Latch County Sheriff, UPD, lots of entities, but it's really led by the city of Gainesville. And for us, it's just a thing we do. We're also used to it, we don't even pay attention to it. But it's a huge undertaking to adjust traffic and, and public safety patterns in such a, 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 a huge way, with 90,000 people in, on, you know, a couple of blocks of Gainesville, six or seven or eight times a year. That's not a regular thing. Most cities don't do things like that. We do, and we're so used to doing it, we don't even notice it. But UF did notice it, and, and is giving us an award for that, we're being recognized. And I, I thought it was important to pass on when we get a pat on the back from partners in, in the community.
Coming to us, or we already received it, or are we going to have something where we have?
So they're, they'll award it to us at the, the trustees meeting on December, Friday of December 5th, I think, is the date. It'll be the first thing on the agenda at nine in the morning. If anyone wants to be a part of that, please let me know. We need to get them a list of who all will be there. I, it is nice to every now and then just stop and, and realize some of the big stuff that we do and be recognized for it, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate, maybe you want to share that, that was a big, big deal last, last year, and I think a number of city staff also came, so I'd certainly be interested. I don't know what the schedule looks like, but, so thanks for, for mentioning that.
Absolutely. All right, Commissioner Chestnut.
I think this is, this is a great list, and if we could have Jennifer included in the newsletter that she sends out, so that people are made aware of it, and also to start promoting before it gets too far. I saw something online the other day about TB McPherson, and he will be holding public engagement meetings. We need to start promoting that so that people are aware of it, and it's not a surprise when it starts.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and again, I would remind everyone that I put a similar document on my social media this past weekend, you can take one like that, or do your own, or, or whatever it's. And these are all things that we have discussed over and over and over up here on the dais, and it's cool to see some of that, those things come out of the ground, specifically right here in front of this building. Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to share appreciation for the kind words. I think game day coordination isn't just right around the university, you know, even, even programs that we run like Gatorator, our, our traffic ops folks who, you know, monitor signals and move people out. It's, it's definitely a all-hands-on-deck type of, of operation, so it's nice to see that we, we receive that, that recognition. On, with respect to the construction project list, we've been talking a little bit internally about bringing some, I think, maybe a greater focus in, in your regular briefing notes that we provide, so you all have more of the sort of updates on these construction projects, everything from, you know, some of the upcoming engagement, as Commissioner Chestnut indicated, to, you know, potentially when construction is going to begin, and providing that a little bit more under a heading of construction. So, because we're going to be entering a year where, where, as the mayor points out, we're going to be under construction. Everything's going to feel like it's under construction. So we want to make sure you all have, you know, as much up-to-date information to share with constituents as possible.
And I think another important point about all of this construction is that we are providing jobs.
Yes.
Jobs, and I think we need to keep that focus in front of people as well.
That's absolutely true. None of this stuff, our, our construction partners don't work for free. Okay, I don't see any further lights. Thank you all for, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
This is for the attorney. When you make, I don't know if you've made your argument to the, oh, I don't know if you've made your argument to the appellate court yet regarding GRU?
No, ma'am. The briefing schedule is still underway. We, we'll be filing our answer brief and our initial brief on the cross appeal. I think we should expect to get a draft from our attorneys that this, by tomorrow, we'll file that shortly. They'll have a chance to file an answer brief, and we'll have a reply brief as well. So the briefing schedule will run its course. The court, in its order staying the results, said there would be no further extensions, but, you know, so, so hopefully that will move as quickly as possible. Then after that, it'll be entirely in the hands of the court, whether to provide for oral argument, or, or enter a ruling, and how long they take is up entirely to the court.
Well, I think an important point to make in the argument is to sort of give the history of these three votes that citizens have taken, but it is quite significant to say that 18% of the people turned out on a single issue vote, and, so that the court can appreciate the sentiment, truly the sentiment of it, of the citizens here, in addition to, to the legal arguments. But I, I think it gives a, I think it gives a different focus. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, thanks for, for the attention to some things kind of out of the blue this afternoon. I appreciate you all bearing with me on that, and we do have some more work this afternoon, or this evening, as well as some celebrations, celebratory items to be had. Madam Clerk, anything else?
That concludes the afternoon agenda.
Very good. I'll see you all at 5:30. Everybody, welcome to this evening session of the regular meeting of Gainesville City Commission for May 20, or, excuse, May 20.
May.
November 20th, 2025. We, we have some celebrations this evening and a little bit of business to do, but we will start off. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We did note that St. Francis Catholic Academy would be with us this evening, but apparently there's been a conflict, and they're unable to be here with us.
Yeah, we have a little miscommunication, I think.
Yeah.
But that's okay. So I would ask you all to rise, please, and join us in the pledge. you all to rise, please, and join us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to our proclamations for the evening. First is 2025-890 Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Gainesville Alumni Chapter 40th Charter Anniversary Day.
Would, are you going to join me up here with any others or just, okay, all right. Well, I will let you hold this while I read it. All right, City of Gainesville, Florida, Office of Mayor Harvey Ward proclamation. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, founded in 1913 on the campus of Howard University, is a sisterhood of college-educated women committed to public service with an emphasis on programs that assist the African-American community. And whereas the Gainesville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was chartered in 1985 by 40 visionary and trailblazing women whose bold leadership and unwavering dedication laid a foundation for decades of impactful service and transformational change, and has been a beacon of advocacy and empowerment, enriching the lives of individuals in Gainesville and the surrounding communities. And whereas the Gainesville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has upheld the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust, economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement through innovative programming, civic engagement, and community empowerment with a foundation of sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. And whereas this 40th anniversary stands as a tribute, not only to the enduring legacy of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, but also to the vision, strength, and unity of the 40 charter members whose dedication to service ignited a movement of purpose, pride, and progress. And whereas we honor and commend the charter members, past and present leaders, and all members whose efforts have shaped the success and enduring impact of the Gainesville Alumni Chapter. And now therefore I, Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim October 26th, 2025, as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Gainesville Alumni Chapter 40th Charter Anniversary Day in the City of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing and celebrating the outstanding contributions of the Gainesville Alumni Chapter and the lasting legacy of its 40 esteemed charter members. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida, this first day of October, 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you.
To the Honorable Mayor Harvey Ward and the esteemed City Commission, good evening. I am Gwendolyn Sappho, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Gainesville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. On behalf of our chapter, I am deeply honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing 40 years of dedicated service to the Gainesville community. We especially acknowledge and celebrate our distinguished charter members, some of which are present today, charter members.[835.23][835.23](Applause) Your vision and fortitude made this moment possible. Their courage and commitment laid the foundation for the impactful work we continue today. To every member of the Gainesville Alumni, Alumni Chapter, please stand. Thank you for caring for the legacy through unwavering sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. As we celebrate 40 charter members and 40 years of fortitude, honoring our legacy and advancing our impact, we accept this proclamation with profound gratitude and renewed dedication to advancing the public good and strengthening the community we are privileged to serve in. Thank you, Mayor Harvey Ward, and the members of the commission for this meaningful recognition. Thank you.[890.01][890.01](Applause)
I would love for you guys to scoot in a little more.
Might be two rows.
Yeah.
If you turn to the side, we get closer.
Two rows.
No amount of line.
I think that'll do it. Thank you. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Mayor, there are three proclamation copies with the next one.
All right, who is joining us to receive for World AIDS Day?
Right behind you.
Come on up.
There we go.
Let you hold those while I read. You can just hold one if you want to. You can just hold one if you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah. City of Gainesville, Florida, Office of Mayor Harvey Ward proclamation. Whereas we commemorate December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day, embracing the theme of "Take the Right Path, My Health, My Right." We support the need for accessible, rights-based healthcare and the protection of human dignity and autonomy for all individuals regardless of their health status. Whereas, World AIDS Day recognizes the necessity in ending the stigma that prevents people from accessing HIV prevention, education, testing, and treatment. We applaud significant advances such as PrEP, which prevents HIV transmission, and the U = U campaign, whose message is to promote that people living with HIV who are taking their meds cannot sexually transmit HIV. Whereas, Let's Talk About It, a support and advocacy group for women living with HIV, has worked to share education on social media about civil and health concerns, along with the inspiring messages to overcome the stigma of HIV. And whereas Gainesville has a wonderful array of service organizations such as Rural Women's Health Projects, Gainesville Area AIDS Project, Peers Empowering Peers, Black AIDS Service and Education, Unspoken Treasure Society, Let's Talk About It, Well Florida, the Alachua County Health Department, and other local organizations, which are united in their efforts to bring together advocates living with HIV and their allies, to build a pathway to stigma-free community. And whereas the City of Gainesville recognizes December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day, and applauds these organizations as well as community members living with HIV AIDS, as they mobilize to prevent future transmissions, diminish HIV-related mortality, and improve the quality of life for people living with HIV. We pause to remember those who have passed and support those who so graciously continue their work. Now therefore I, Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day in the City of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in this recognition. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida, this sixth day of November, 2025. Very good. If you wanted to say a few words?
Yes. I'm Marvina Edwards. I am the president of PEP. I have been since 1987. We have come a long ways. Thank God. There is a one pill. There is an injection now that we can do as well. I am also a part of Gap, a part of Let's Talk About It, which is a women's group, that we, we go out in the community, we educate the community. We are part of the community. We make sure that we educate our people, our friends, our families, and the community itself. Peers Empowering Peers is a group of people that come together to make sure that the people in our communities are educated. We make sure that at times and points that we have a luncheon. We have a luncheon every last Friday of the month where the people are able to come together, be able to support one another, and feel free to just be themselves. Gap, Gainesville Area AIDS Project, also not only support those that are living with, they support the community. We do the luncheon, the free luncheon every Tuesday. We have people in the community that come out and be able to sit around and feel free to be themselves. Let's Talk About It, our women's group. It's a place where the women can come together, where the women educate other women, not only in Alachua County, but outside of Alachua County. So we wear a lot of, lot of hats. We're doing a lot of work in the community that we love, and we want to continue doing this work. And we thank you all for allowing us to be participating here in part of this and all the things that you have done to make it easier for us in this community. I thank you so much.[1240.33][1240.33](Applause)
Yeah, I got two more. Got half. Thank you.
Come on. City of Gainesville, Florida, Office of Mayor Harvey Ward proclamation. Whereas approximately 4.2 million young people ages 13 to 25 experience some form of homelessness in the United States each year. And whereas, while living on the streets, in their cars, shelters, or couch surfing, young people may struggle to afford food, care for their mental and physical health, attend or complete school, and avoid dangerous or violent situations. And whereas the most common reasons young people run away or experience homelessness include family conflicts, being asked to leave home, verbal, emotional, or physical abuse, neglect, and financial problems at home. And whereas young people who experience homelessness are more than likely to experience homelessness in adulthood. And whereas the National Runaway Safeline and CDS Family and Behavioral Health Services are working to raise awareness and educate local communities about youth homelessness and the importance of prevention during Youth Homelessness Outreach, Prevention, and Education Hope Month. Now therefore I, Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Youth Homelessness Outreach, Prevention, and Education Hope Month in the City of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in encouraging residents to recognize the role we can all play in advocating for this vulnerable population of young people. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida, this sixth day of November, 2025. Say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commission. Yes, everything that the mayor read as a predicate is true. We have children, youth, and families in Gainesville who we work with every single day, our teams work with. They work with them through our shelter, the new one by the airport. We work with them through our community counseling program. We work with them in the schools and in the communities for this very hope prevention. So we thank you for paying attention to this cause, as well as to the others that were just before us. And we invite you to participate in an easy way to bring attention, I think Commissioner Book has done it, by wearing green. Green is the color for National Youth Hope Month. Again, we thank you very much for this attention.[1454.11][1454.11](Applause)
I've got two, two sets of photos.
Y'all got this all the excitement with the financial board.[1473.32][1473.32](Laughter)
One, two, three.
Somebody's walker.
Let me get one.
Vivian.
All right. One, two. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have early public comment, but no one has signed up. And so we'll be on to our only item for the evening, Resolution 2025-928 of the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida, relating to its general government budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, amending Resolution Number 2024-733 as amended by Resolution 2024-912, as amended by Resolution 2025-166, and amended by Resolution 2025-436, and amended by Resolution Number 2025-565, and amended by Resolution 2025-690 by making certain adjustments to the general government financial and operating plan budget and providing an immediate effective date.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Manager, did you want to intro this?
Sure. This is the final budget amendment for FY25. And this was presented back in the, earlier this week at the Finance Committee meeting. The budget amendment represents estimated projections for department budgets across all funds and transactions to prepare the audit, which we expect to be finalized in the spring of 2026. And I believe, I'm not sure who's presenting this. I don't know if it's Susan. All right. Susan Boyd will present. And we do want to hopefully use the opportunity to introduce our new budget director as well.
Excellent. Welcome.
Good luck, Allison.
Okay. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Allison Tesley. I'm the new budget director for the City of Gainesville. I come here with over 15 years of governmental accounting and budgeting experience, and I'm looking forward to becoming a part of this community.
Excellent. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Susan Boyd, Senior Budget Analyst for the Office of Management and Budget. As Mr. Person's mentioned, this is our sixth and final budget amendment for the fiscal year 25 Financial and Operating Plan. We are statutorily required to do this last amendment within 60 days of the close of the fiscal year. And so it is reconciliation of departments to make sure all the budgets are aligned with the actuals that they've spent thus far. So we presented this, like Andrew said, to the Finance Committee on Monday, so I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. If you guys have any questions, just let me know. General fund amendments include an auditing entry that we have for, it's 1.7 million. It's a revenue and expense offset for posting by accounting for the Governmental Accounting Standards Bureau 96, which is a full cost allocation for software purchases that are done throughout the year. And then we have some expenditures that are funded by, we had some departments that had some shortfalls in their actuals and their budgets, so we reconciled those based upon just pulling from other departments. Fire rescue was our big one. They were 1.2 million over, and we pulled funding from Public Works and the Police Department transferred funding over there to cover that shortfall, and that was due to personnel overages in their department. And those were kind of spread out across the department. It wasn't one specific spend category or other that, you know, that they had the overages. We also had $52,000 that we transferred to the Non-Departmental Cost Center to cover the third and fourth quarter GRU litigation expenses. We had $20,000 for the City Clerk's Office for year-end reconciliation for our personnel overages. And then we had a couple of small other year-end reconciliations for City Hall for security and Parks and Rec Program. In the special revenue funds, we had some allocations for new revenue that came in for miscellaneous different programs that we have throughout fire and police in those departments. Again, some of these entries were off of the Gatsby 96. We had some reconciliations in the City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, and the GCRRA funding for personnel overages, reconciliation of the GPD billable overtime fund. They had some additional revenue over and above what we had set up. Then some miscellaneous small projects in the police and transportation for different funds and fees that we've collected. funds and fees that we've collected, you know, during this last quarter for those. We had some new grant funding that came in for, we had a grant with the International City County Management Association for $354,000. We had a grant with the Division of State Fire Marshal for Hazmat Sustainment, which was $55,000, and then some additional funding for an ongoing mosquito control program in Public Works. Try not to get too close. And then again, the rest of these are expenditure appropriations where we are closing some inactive grants, so reconciling some grants that have closed throughout the course of the year, make sure those are all reconciled out. In the capital project funds, again, we had some new revenue coming in for the sale of golf carts and the capital surcharge fee with Ironwood. And then we had allocation of some fund balance in the Wild Spaces Public Places funds. This was closing out some projects that we had and reallocating funding for some new projects. We had a, sorry, we had a, lost my train of thought there. In Wild Spaces, we added some additional funding for the Hippodrome Project and their operating set aside project, which is ongoing for personnel coverages. We reduced the funding for Thelma Bolton, which we had originally, and added some additional funding for some new projects and other projects where costs and expenses have come in higher than we originally anticipated. In the proprietary funds, most of these were GASB entries, as we talked about earlier, allocations of fund balance for City Manager's Office and other departments for, you know, salary shortages. What else? Sorry. We had additional funding come in for some sale of vehicles for transportation. Trying to go through it quickly. There's a lot here. A lot of it's just closeouts. We had additional funding that came in for, that had to be appropriated for Blue Cross and Blue Shield claims that were paid out during the course of the year. That came out of our pension, our Employee Health and Accident Fund, and Fleet Replacement Fund was an adjustment moving from one department to another. And then the final one in the fiduciary was just expenditures that had already been, we had allocations already appropriated for fund balance, and this was just year-end reconciliation of those for overages on personnel cost. Trying to make it quick.
Those are just the highlights.
Those are just the highlights. I can read it word for word, but yeah, I think you're going to do that.
Not that we don't want to hear you speak, but you know, that's it. Thank you very much. I don't see any questions, but Mr. Finance Chair, you all processed this and recommended it forward, correct?
Yes, and I just want to make sure we, because I had a question earlier a little bit about the personnel overages in GFR, and just to reiterate what Ms. Boyd said, it was, it wasn't just overtime, it was a split across. It's the fact that there's retirements, the fact that there's, it's not just, oh, we went over overtime. It was really about seventy-five percent of that overage was some form of other things about the way a staff is structured, how they get their jobs done, not merely its personnel, but it's not just, oh, those vacancies cost us to have, you know, that one person have to work extra time. Part of it's related to the 24/72, and so that's just a note to know that it's not, I think Chief Hill just kind of said, oh, overtime as a shorthand for personnel, you know, because it is over, but it's actually not just, because I know we had conversations over the past two budget cycles about really wanting to make sure ahead of time we know what, we think some of those overtimes are going to end up being at the end of the year, but so that does not represent a 1.2, and so I just wanted to make sure, you know, for all the good work that all of our staff does, that we really, that we don't think, oh, that was a, that kind of overage. No, it was far less when it was just the overtime portion of it, a little over 300,000 roughly compared to the 1.2 million dollar numbers. I just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Eastman?
Yeah, thank you. Just, so the one, the number that stuck out the most to me was the 1.5 million that was coming out of Thelma Bolton, and then that went, I think, the majority into Vivens Arm Boardwalk Project. Am I, am I recalling this right?
I believe so.
Why, why that particular project?
Because they're, they're separate things. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, yeah, they're separate things. That was actually a question that had been brought up at Finance Committee. They're budgeted separately, they're, they're, they just happen to have very similar dollar figures between the two.
Okay. But so the, but the Boardwalk Project's just, there's an overage on it, I guess, is the...
That's correct, yeah. It was, it was costed out, and that's what the, that's what the amount was.
That, that was the excess, so that's the total cost of the project.
Right, yeah, but the two things, they, the one and a half from Thelma Bolton is unrelated to the Boardwalk and then to the Thelma Bolton piece, or, sorry, TB McPherson piece.
Yeah, okay. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this, Madam Plurk?
No public comment.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Book?
I, I think that it'd be appropriate for the chair to make the motion, but it's eleven-page backup, it's pretty dense material, right, as we know, but it does offer some, some real interesting line items, a couple of things we discussed. When Chair Willetts had the meeting the other day was, the fund balance can be listed in various places from page five to eleven, so you can see how we use that. This, this grant, pretty interesting grant from the International City County Managers Association. I thought, Mr. Manager, can you just give us a line of exactly what that is? Because that is, that's a really good use of receiving funds from, from an external source.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was also highlighted at the Finance Committee, so I'm happy to speak about it. We had an opportunity to apply for a new grant application through ICMA for an Economic Mobility Director, and essentially what the grant does is to provide twenty-four months of salary as well as some operating funds for the city to hire a Economic Mobility Director to, on, essentially on, as part of the grant through ICMA. And so that person will be, we actually have applications that we just received, we'll be moving forward with screening those and hiring somebody very soon. Several members of my office, John Alexander and several other people, including some members from CRA are actually going to be in El Paso, Texas in a couple of weeks, being, going through some training there. The grant will fund that position for two years. There is a sort of a project aspect to it through ICMA, and some of that will be the operating funds that come along with that as well. And so, so you're, this is on the budget amendment to reflect that, that award of the grant.
That's a, that's a good use, right?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, do your...
That's very good.
Okay. You know, we're always asking about Wild Spaces Public Places, and Commissioner Eastman could pick up by looking. That's on page eight, a lot of the current changes to what we're doing with Wild Spaces. I know we'll have a quarterly update coming soon, where I'll be looking at all the projects. Something I found interesting, not this eleven-page financial document, but something interesting about the, we have amendments as small as $500. So where we've had to figure out $500 difference in a line item, we're accounting for it. Where that could just be easily, you take small amounts and just say, ah, that's probably just more general fund, and I think that says something about the way that we're dealing with in finances. If it's some money and it goes in a particular bucket, we're showing it in those particular buckets. That's good financial accounting. So that was interesting, and one thing that we did have a little concern was we had high claims. Our claims and risk management is pretty high. So that's, you know, accident injury, and, you know, the manager may choose to end up having to take a look at to see if there's trends or practices or things to mitigate that. But thank you. So the chair went through this, but some dense material, but good material. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. Commissioner Willetts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one other, we don't often say something come in under budget, but the North Main Street, 39th Ave. to 53rd Avenue project and Street Station Strong Foundation returned $191,628 back into that for, for the next road or, or fire station project. And so that was kind of exciting. So with that, I'm going to adopt a resolution 2025-928, sixth budget amendment to the FY25 General Government Financial and Operating Plan Budget.
Chair, second?
Second.
Motion to the second. I see no for the lights, so Madam Plurk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Commissioner Willetts?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingle?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Mayor Board?
Aye, that passes you down, missly, with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. All right, Madam Plurk?
Commission comment?
Any commission comment? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to provide a brief update, thanks to the work of several offices, including Finance, OMB, and Procurement. I'm happy to report that we will be sending out the Bread of the Mighty payment, I think, with this Monday's payout, so we're happy to be able to move that forward, and you'll see that coming up, I think, later in December on your next budget amendment.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Willetts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to remind people that today, November 20th, is Transgender Day of Remembrance, and there will be a ceremony at Bo Diddley at seven o'clock. This day is to particularly remember people over the course of the last year, transgender people around the entire world who died due to violence that is, that is linked somehow probably to transphobia, so it is, it is a very somber event with the reading of names with candles, I'm sure electronic, but that's something that goes on in our community basically every year, and I will be attending, and the mayor has a proclamation for that that will be read. But I just wanted to mark that day, and that's what my pocket square is remembering and representing. This is about the twenty-sixth year, twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth year of, twenty-fifth year, I think, of Transgender Day of Remembrance. It's been around for a while, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willetts, please join us over there if you're able. Anybody else? Fantastic. All right, well, this has been a very productive day, and we don't have any more official meetings before the Fourth. So next week is Thanksgiving. I wish everyone a joyful and grateful Thanksgiving, and we will see you in a couple weeks. We adjourn.